Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
... in a classic modern setting. There are two hundred young round banner trees, enchanted colonial homes, stately sea captains homes, and shilling cap card salt boxes. Shirley Acres is a glorious forbade of cap cards past and present. Shirley Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Grand Harbor Waterfront lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Grand Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and a kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 508-4747, or go GrandHarbor.com.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape Island's home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is CarlsonPrinting@AOL.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Megamet Communications. Megamet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, FABR, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or megamet.net.
A quarterback restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing
Welcome to the Monday, December 16th Selectments Meeting. I'm sharing tonight because Megan's going to be a few minutes late, and we're going
in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with
to go into executive session, and I declare that if you're not going to executive session
friendly staff. And a bucatino restaurant and wine bar located near Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway,
would prejudice to town's position. And so, have a roll call vote.
featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine.
And we're going to return to open session, right?
Yes, we're going to return to open session at 7:00 or shortly thereafter.
A quarterback restaurant and bucatino restaurant and wine bar.
And just for the minutes, you should say what the reasons why we're going into executive
We're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
session are under the agenda.
Oh, and one is for discussion of...
This is the general...
Discuss potential land acquisition, Liberty Green, 556 Main Street, in Lantern Lane, Falmouth. And number two is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, AFSMI Local, 1636 Unit A.
Second.
Patterson, aye.
Moran, aye.
Jones, aye.
Brown, aye. Very good. We're going to be returning at 7:00 or shortly after.
Thank you.
We are just back in from executive session, and if you could please join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't believe we have a proclamation tonight. So, recognition, Mr. Brown? Anything for recognition in particular?
Nothing comes to mind this week unless anyone has any suggestions.
I would just recognize the passing of Tom Norton, and if people knew him, he was an absolute town character. He was a wordsmith, he was very clever, he always had some kind of very, you know, really creative poem or pun. His children, still, many of his children still reside here in town, grandchildren, and he just really was a wonderful guy. He'd been in the Marines and had really made his home here in Falmouth, and had worked for many years at the Tides Motel, and was a very avid tennis player who really just, you know, put you to shame because, you know, I was complaining when I first met him at 30 about aches and pains, and he was heading, you know, having just played two hours of tennis, and he was, you know, already in his 70s. So, we will really miss him. He passed away peacefully on December 9th, so just our condolences to his family, but more importantly, just a wonderful celebration of sort of a really unique individual. So, thinking about him and thinking about his family.
Nice.
Any announcements? Yes. Mr. Johnson, stop for executive session.
From the executive session, yes. I'm happy to report that the town and the union that represents many of the town hall employees, this is AFSMI Unit A, have reached an agreement on a three-year contract effective which runs FY '20 through FY '22.
Great, thank you. It's an ongoing process, so thank you.
And you see the Falmouth Marina 2019 Boters Choice Award recipient?
Yes, I think we were going to have, I thought I saw it, did I see Greg Fraser?
Harbor Master's here, Greg Fraser.
Did you just want to come up and just explain what it is and let folks know that we were, Falmouth Marina was a 2019 Boters Choice Award recipient? Just for folks who don't follow it, can you just tell us what that means?
Sure, thank you. This is actually the second year we've gotten the award. Any boater that comes into the Falmouth Marina or any other Marina can go onto marina.com and review their stay, and if you get 3% or higher of the marinas in that organization, you get this award on an annual basis, so it's the second year. I would like to, if I could, just very briefly tell you, thank a couple people that are responsible for this, and we have a long-term, excuse me, dock master that's a seasonal, Bob Griffin, who oversees a wonderful staff of seasonal employees, young men and women who are in high school and college who do the waterways assistant positions. We had an exceptional group of kids this year, and they got accolades on all of the reviews. I think we had about 28 of them, and 25 of those were five-star.
That's wonderful.
So, we're very happy, and, you know, we have a couple things we're working on now. Some of the reviews mention Wi-Fi, we're trying to get that to the Marina. We are working on that with the IT department, so we're looking forward to this season.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for recognizing all the people who make it possible, and all the students who are either back at school here or in college, and it's a great, it's a great way for people to learn about our town as they come in, so thank you. Congratulations. Public comment. So, public comment, just to remind everyone, is a period where an individual can come up, they can speak for up to two minutes on an issue that is not on the agenda. Just to clarify, because I know there's been some confusion, you can talk about what you want to talk about, you can criticize any policy of the town, you can criticize folks that are here if you'd like, but we really are just not going to have folks criticizing individuals who are not in this room, who can't respond, because public comment isn't a period of debate, so no one can really kind of answer whatever it is you're saying. So, really, it's a period of time, make your point known, absolutely, you should be critical of your municipal government, that's, everybody has that right. So, if anyone wants to come up and make a pitch for whatever it is that they're interested in talking about, please just put your hand up and we'll just get started. Yes, please come on up.
Can you be over?
Yes, we can. We can, welcome. Hi.
Pull the mic down a bit.
Okay. I'm Janice Shellent, I live at 597 West Falmouth Highway. My husband and I moved to West Falmouth seven years ago from Wellesley, Mass. And there was much that attracted us to West Falmouth, a quaint village that seemed to have so much to offer, a library, preschool, market, fire station, restaurants, post office, theater, houses, houses of worship, and close proximity to a very vibrant harbor. And we also learned an inclusive community that cared about the village and each other. There's a lot that's packed into this little village. We did our homework and learned that the West Falmouth community over the years has actively engaged to make the community a better place for all. And frankly, over the past seven years, we have noticed many improvements. The library, the library renovation, the reshaping of the West Falmouth Market, improvements to the harbor, the bike path, and recently the renovations that are just beginning at the College Light Opera Company. Big and impressive innovations where citizens and town officials organize to improve the quality of this little village. Residing in Wellesley for over 30 years and being a school principal there, I closely worked with town departments, and I understand the complexity of town budgets, a decision, the town's decision-making process, and the overarching responsibility of town officials, both elected and appointed, that have as their goal to protect the citizens of their town. When I heard about the proposed changes to our fire station, I naturally had many questions. I was not aware of a process that encouraged citizens to express their concerns, or forums where we, the taxpayers, could hear the department's concerns and rationale for making the decision to close the department, the station. Frankly, that surprised me. Recently, I was made aware of your call to action to create a committee composed of taxpayers, department professionals, and town officials to evaluate fire protection in town, and I thank you for this.
Ma'am, you're at 2 minutes and 20 seconds, actually.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to, is there a little bit more you want to add up to us, or?
Yep, I'm assuming that you value your work, the work of this committee, and that the members will be encouraged to express their concerns and offer ideas for all to consider. After engaging in fair and open conversations, I assume you'll develop a model for Falmouth that will provide for reasonable fire and EMS protection for all of Falmouth citizens. And if I'm correct in making these assumptions, I urge the board to rescind the current decision for West Falmouth Fire Station and wait until you complete your work with this committee, just to ensure that the fate of this station is decided under the overarching goal of better protection for all.
I just have to stop you there, I'm sorry, I gave you an extra, normally it's a two-minute, and I gave you the extra because I know there's lots of people in this room who are going to get up and probably say the same thing, but if you want to pass in what, if you want to pass it to us, whatever part is remaining, thank you.
I will, so I thank you very much.
Thank you, sorry, I know it's hard to fit everything in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Come on up, ma'am.
I'd like to ask, I was here last week...
If you just introduce yourself for folks at home.
Terri Jewett, hi. I'd like to know if you tested the water that we was talking about last week.
So, this is public comment, so it's not, we can't answer any questions, this is a public comment, it's a period for you to make a comment.
All right, then I'll say what I have to say, okay.
But if you want to send in questions, shoot us an email or give us a call, we can answer those questions. Public comment, we can't...
Well, I have, all right, all right, I want to say that last week at the meeting, you said that you were here to protect the community and the town workers. This asbestos has been going on for years, and putting a drug rehab next to an elementary school, I don't consider that protecting the community. I don't know what you think you're doing up here, but it doesn't seem like it's a job. And I do have a constitution, if you'd like a copy, I could make you one, because we do have freedom of speech.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Great, thank you. We have under summary of actions, licenses, approve application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic common victorial license, Josh's at Davisville, 339 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, continued from 12/9/19. Someone here for this application? I see you back there. Take your time. Welcome, how are you? If you just introduce yourself.
Kim Martin.
Hi, Kim.
How are you?
And we know you've been doing, you know, been working at this restaurant and working here for a while, but we do ask for all the applicants to come forward, so generally, we just ask what kind of experience you have in terms of doing this type of work.
Okay, well, I've been in the business for 30 years. I bartended, served, Josh and I opened the restaurant together, and been there since day one.
Have you been, had been a manager for the liquor license before?
No.
And so, the major reason we have is just to point out that you are going to be responsible for every, the serving and any violations will come back to you.
Right, I'm aware of that, yeah.
Apologies, you had to come just for, hear those 30 seconds, but...
That's okay. For some folks, it really is, you know, it's only fair for them to know that, because a lot of times people can sometimes step into these positions without being aware of sort of the weight of, you know, that that carries, so.
Right.
Why make you come in front of us?
I would move approval of the change of manager.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Pass up, round. Okay, next, we have under administrative orders, vote, appointment of town accountant. Mr. Soussell.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, under the Falmouth Town Charter, every three years, the town of Falmouth are in a position to affirm the appointment of the town treasurer, and Victoria Rose has been our town treasurer for the past three-year term, and prior to that, during my tenure as town manager, and I have nothing but accolades for Vicky. She's an extraordinary professional, serves all departments even-handedly, and is frequently consulted for financial questions, a key player in the finance department, working with Finance Director Jennifer Mullen, and I wholeheartedly recommend your consideration of extending Vicky's appointment as town accountant for an additional three-year term, and that would be my pleasure to so recommend.
I would move that we reaffirm the appointment of Victoria Rose as the town accountant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky is with us here this evening as well, so I do want to note that. Welcome, Vicky, and thank you.
Putting the pressure on there, right in the front row staring at stuff, right? Yes, thank you, we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Vicky.
So, on the next item, I actually received a request from Linda Davis from Solid Waste Advisory, that we put this over, because she is unexpectedly away, and so was someone else. They really want someone from their committee to be able to be here, to hear what we were saying, and maybe have a conversation, so it came out at the last minute that they thought maybe someone could make it in camp, but they did take me up on the offer when I said if no one can be here, we can postpone it, so I think we will do so.
Madam Chair, with your concurrence, then we'll carry this into a meeting in January to be determined.
Great, thank you.
I think it would be useful just to emphasize, put emphasis on that most of the recommendations we are following that they're making, and the recommendations of the town managers, that we follow exactly what their recommendations are. There's very little that we're having a pushback. I think it's no problem pushing it forward, but just that they know.
Right, just so they know that, and there's some timing, there's some sort of timing and implementation, but yes, good point. Not a big objection, it's just sort of the logistics, and I think that's part of what they want to be, maybe be part of that conversation, or at least hear that, and I know we were going to hear maybe from Peter McConerty about some of that, so I think it's, we can put it over, but well put, that they shouldn't be worried that it's going to be hugely different.
We're working collaboratively with them, clearly, and I want to thank Peter McConerty, Peter Johnson Staub, and others for their collaborative work, and thank members of Solid Waste Advisory Committee for their spirit of cooperation and collaboration as well.
Thank you. All right, so we'll put that over to, I don't think we need a motion on that, do we? No.
No, just consensus, we'll carry it forward.
We need to vote an effective date for the one-time plastic bottle ban, so that's one of the requirements of the, you know, the article that was passed at town meeting requires this board to actually set a date, so it's something that we need to talk about and decide so that, you know, everyone can kind of plan accordingly as we head into a whole nother season of events and activities, and that this will impact.
We have a question about this. Why does it say the one-time plastic bottle ban?
Single use. Single use.
Oh, single use, okay.
Yep.
Not just for one day?
No, it's, the plastic bottle is the one-time.
I see.
Assume and throw.
I'm looking at the request to make it September 1st with respect to the Commodores.
Yes, I mean, I think there's some, we know we have a number of big activities, the road race is one of them, Commodores is, you know, they're, all of their activities, and I know in general, most of these organizations and events are kind of already in the planning for their upcoming season, so the goal of this...
Dominations are made.
Yes, the goal of this was never, and even in terms of the petitioners, was never to really, you know, make this, you know, onerous, but really to get the community to come together, so I don't know what other people feel about...
I feel it's enough time to proceed forward earlier than that. At some point, we're going to do this.
Can, could we consider like exemptions by case by case?
There is, there is language for exemption, or hardships, I think it's called. Peter, did you have your hand up?
Just, I want to, I think the board is aware, but perhaps members of the public may not be, the bylaw specifies that the implementation date, the effective date of the single-use plastic ban, and this is again, only for single-use plastics that are either purchased by the town, sold by the town, or by a tenant on town property, meaning town, meaning a facility owned by the town, and that bylaw said that the effective date would be no later than September 1, and it just leaves the question for those of our lessees, such as, you've mentioned a couple of them, the golf club, Billy Casper runs the Falmouth Golf Club, which is owned by the town, so they're, they're another affected party. We have some concessions at the beaches that sell bottled beverages, so they're, they're affected as well. And so, the question is, you know, I think they're looking for some certainty as to when they're going to have to comply, and not surprisingly, they would all love to have the September 1 effective date and not sooner, but I just wanted to, again, overview for, for the board and members of the public, what the parameters are.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think we could, I think we could also request that they start it earlier, and certainly, by thinking of what the implications are for their particular event, they can begin to think about what they're going to do with the following year, but I don't think there's any reason we can't say, this is the spirit of the town, and we would like you to start, you know, conforming to this bylaw as early as possible, and would appreciate anything you can do to help us move in the right direction. But, you know, but I think it does make some sense for some of the larger events where there's a lot of logistics involved, for them to at least begin to think about how they're going to handle it in the following year, in 2021.
The road race would not be impacted too much, I understand, because they're not selling any of this. Most of what they're doing is being purchased by the road race and given away, and that does not get spirited, it would be great if they were not doing that, but the bylaw does not prohibit that.
But they do have some vendors at the park that do sell food and beverages, okay, that would be affected.
I have to say that some of the triathlon events, they're actually giving out water bottles that can be refilled, and so they're already thinking about what they can do to, you know, support conservation efforts in this, and the reduction of the amount of plastic that just gets thrown away into, you know, landfills or dumped into the ocean by virtue of just being flushed out through various tributaries.
Any other thoughts or discussion, or?
What about a weird compromise of August 1st, saying, you know, get through the season, but start implementing it?
It'd be hard to do that right in the middle of their season, because I'm sure they have contracts that go either way. I don't know that they would consider it a benefit.
August 1st is before the road race, so you've, basically, you're forcing it on them.
Also, the Commodore's season is still underway in August 1st.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, I know, I guess I'm saying, okay, let's, at some point, they're going to have to do this.
Yep.
Is it a little bit easier in the transition during, or is it going to be a clean break?
Well, I mean, the other thing is, you can, I mean, the other option is sort of along the lines of what Doug Brown was saying, is you make it effective, you know, not immediately, but January 1, and then, but what that then does is create the need probably for some sort of hardship hearings or requests, right? I think it's called a hardship or waiver, what did they call it in the bylaw? I don't have it in front of me. I think it was a hardship, I felt like that was the line.
I think so, I thought it was only for health issues.
No, I think that you could ask for, there's a, there's a component, it does not apply when there are public health emergencies, but there was some mechanism to ask for that waiver, if there was some type of hardship that you could put forward.
I think that speaks to Sam's point, which is, if we set just, for example, September 1, but we made clear that this is to lower the amount of hardship hearings, to give plenty of time in that with the, you know, with the intention that anyone, you know, that people really try to, you know, really try to implement it ahead of time, and that way, if we do have such a hearing, we can ask for what Sam has mentioned, which is, what did you do to implement this early, you know, what efforts have you made, and that would be sort of a standard that we could use.
Anybody have?
I was thinking we'd start at the beginning of summer, get people on board, they've got all winter to figure it out.
Like June 1?
Yeah. I mean, I know it's disruptive and it's a pain, but that's how you, how you change things.
Well, I would make that motion, that we have effective date be June 1st.
Can I just ask, did you find the language by any chance?
I did find the language, and there's an exemption for public health and safety operations. There's not a hardship.
There's nothing, a hardship, there's no request for a waiver?
No.
But is there any law, bylaw, seems like you could have a waiver if you wanted to, if we wanted to temporarily waive it.
I don't think so.
Not really. No, a selectman regula, if it's, if it was, you know, potentially, if there was a policy of the Board of Selectmen that you generated, then, then you could make exceptions to your own policy, but not for a bylaw adopted by town meetings.
Maybe I'm not so quick to push for the June 1st, then, I don't know.
We have a motion, do we have a second for that? What did you say?
It was a second, I think. Did you second, or was it?
I guess I kind of made the motion, because he said he would second it, I don't know if it was technically really a motion.
So, without that...
waiver, if there was some type of hardship that you could put forward.
I think that speaks to Sam's point, which is if we set, just for example, September 1, but we made clear that this is to lower the amount of hardship hearings, to give plenty of time in that with the, you know, with the intention that anyone, you know, that people really try to, you know, really try to implement it ahead of time. And that way, if we do have such a hearing, we can ask for what Sam has mentioned, which is, what did you do to implement this early? You know, what efforts have you made? And that would be sort of a standard that we could use.
Anybody have?
I was thinking we'd start at the beginning of summer, get people on board. They've got all winter to figure it out.
Like June 1?
Yeah. I mean, I know it's disruptive and it's a pain, but that's how you, how you change things.
Well, I would make that motion, that we have effective date be June 1st.
But can I just ask, did you find the language by any chance?
I did find the language, and there, there's an exemption for public health and safety operations. There's not a hardship.
There's nothing, there's no request for a waiver?
No.
Okay.
But is there any law, bylaw? Seems like you could have a waiver if you wanted to, if we wanted to temporarily waive it.
I don't think so.
Not really.
Selectmen regula, if it's, if it was, you know, potentially, if there was a policy of the Board of Selectmen that you generated, then, then you could make exceptions to your own policy, but not for a bylaw adopted by town meeting.
Maybe I'm not so quick to push for the June 1st then, I don't know.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for that?
There was a second, I think. Did you second, or was it?
I guess I kind of made the motion, because he said he would second it. I don't know if it was technically really a motion.
So, without that, and I apologize for confusing the issue. I thought that there had been some language about that, so I'm sorry.
You clarified it.
But inadvertently, but.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
You say, if you do something like that, you're going to have to have a criteria for how you would make the exceptions, too.
Right.
And I'm not sure we could come up with that on the spot. So, well, I'm going to move that we basically set September 1 as the deadline going forward. It's in the 2020 year, 2020.
Their second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can we do any kind of, oh, yeah. I didn't want to interrupt the vote, sorry.
Okay.
Can we do any kind of incentivizing to help push this along? Is there anything we can do to?
Well, I think probably the best thing would be as we send this notice out, to point out that, you know, we're giving that long lead time, but the goal really, and the preference is for this to start sooner rather than later. And just the, to envision the amount of plastic that we could keep out of the, you know, stream of trash, if we had, if we started at this. Think about all that, that we could prevent from going into it. So, I mean, they're going to have to start working with new vendors. They're going to probably have some different machines, because they're probably going to go back to cans for some of these things. So, the sooner they do it, in some ways, probably the better, but.
I'll reiterate, the schools have already done this.
Yes.
Right.
They're already almost a full year ahead of what we're now putting out there.
So, that might also be good to put in the letter, is just that if some of these, I mean, obviously, larger organizations have their own vendor relationships, but if people are, it might be a nice place to resource, to look to.
Oh, I see.
How the school has done it for some of these.
We'll be notifying folks that apply for special events as a matter of routine. And obviously, the, through the procurement process, we'll also make that clear.
Is there any way in their vendor, if they, if these are procurements, if these are vendors that the town's hiring, is there a incentive saying, we're giving preference to vendors who actually are adhering to this bylaw ahead of time?
Well, we're in the midst of ongoing contracts for most of our vendors, rather than starting them. But certainly, as we, as we procure for new services, for instance, the beaches, we're in the midst of contracts on those.
I guess that's another good reason that, good that we waited till September 1st then, because you don't want to throw them a curveball on a three-year contract in the third year.
Well, it may be, I mean, if it's the midst of a three-year contract, it will be a curveball, because if they're already contracted for next year.
At least they'll get through to September 1st, and they'll just have to rough it for the last month.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
They'll be ready for the next season. That'll give them all a warm-up.
Long warm-up period.
Selectmen to start.
Excellent. Okay, we have vote to approve expenditure from the Rec Department donation account in the amount of $1,195 to Dacco Bus Company. This is for a trip to New York, I believe.
Right.
Yep. So, this is something that serves the community. This was, this is a trip where they go for the day. I think they see, they went and they saw a show, and they did a whole bunch of stuff. And this is just covering that balance.
I would move approval of the expenditure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, really, really great resource for people in town to be able to get to New York in the holiday season. Okay, authorize application to Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation Forest Stewardship Program to obtain a forestry plan for a 17-acre parcel adjacent to Coonamessa Farm in Hatchville.
Madam Chair, you have a, you and other members of the board have a copy of an email from Mark Casperzik explaining this process. There's really no downside for the town. It's really the development of a plan, and including this in a broader acreage would be a positive opportunity.
Does anyone have any questions about this?
And this is contiguous to the Natsusa project, right?
It is, yes.
I move that we authorize an application to Massachusetts Department of Conservation Recreation Forest Stewardship Program to obtain a forestry plan for the 17-acre parcel adjacent to Coonamessa Farm in Hatchville.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to start our public hearings. We have two tree, shade tree hearings tonight. We're going to start first with the shade tree at 220 Old Main Road. So, let me just please read the, I'm going to read the public notice. Town of Falmouth Public Hearing Notice, Shade Tree Removal. Notices hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Falmouth Board of Selectmen in the Selectmen's Meeting Room Monday, December 16, 2019 at 7:30 p.m. on the application of the tree warden for the removal of two trees at the following locations. 220 Old Main Road, One American Elm, Internal Decay, 475 Main Street, One Sweet Gum, Unstructural Crown, and Storm Damage. Removal is necessary because of the poor condition of the trees and possible safety hazard. Order of Selectmen and the publication date was Friday, December 6, 2019, in the Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome. Come on up, Jeremiah.
Good evening, Jeremiah Pearson, tree warden. So, the first tree at 220 Old Main Road, it's an American elm. For years, the O'Reilly family's been requesting for its removal. The Parks Department hasn't removed it because of the species and the historical significance. The tree otherwise looked healthy. So, a couple months ago, we utilized the UMass Diagnostic Lab to utilize something called sonic tomography. And they came down, and we did, we did tests on it, and it came up that it was 64% internally decayed. The tree has a really strong lean towards the O'Reilly's house. And with that decay, you know, it's evidence that needs to be removed.
Was it like an ultrasound?
It's, it's, they use sound waves and electrical resistance. It's like, I consider it like a CAT scan. So, it shows the internal decay.
Any questions on this from the board?
Any chance of a replacement?
Yes, I'd want to put an elm in its, in its place, just.
The other notice, there was a discussion about replacement, but there wasn't any.
Both, both spots would be, would be replacing it with more trees.
Great.
Anything else from the board before I hear from the public?
No, just go by it today. It's really leaning.
Still leaning. Anyone here who wants to speak on this issue? Yes, sir, welcome. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Ron Benham. I'm Mr. O'Reilly, actually. And Jeremiah and Rocky, prior to Jeremiah, have been very closely following this. And I think the real issue for us is just that we don't want the tree potentially could hit our house and do significant damage. And so, the town has been very helpful in terms of sort of processing this along. So, we'd very much appreciate a positive vote.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? And we did receive some emails, both from Mrs. O'Reilly, Ms. O'Reilly, and also from Mr. Lebock about this, you know, also asking for the removal. So, any other comments from folks here?
Will we close the hearing?
I have a motion to close the hearing. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I would move that we authorize the tree warden to remove the element 220 Old Main Road and replace with whatever elms he can put back there.
Great, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Can I make one other comment?
Come on up.
We would love.
Oh, you got to come up to the microphone, sorry.
Not for us, but for the audience.
For people at home.
Sorry. We would, we would very much appreciate being able to have a new tree in its place, actually.
He's going to do that.
That would, oh, okay. That's fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the second tree at 475 Main Street. That was from the same notice, so.
So, this tree, a large portion of the crown tore off during one of the October storms. It's, at this point, is pretty well unstructural, and I highly suggest removal of it, because it has a very large target zone. Obviously, you got the, the road there, Main Street, and the sidewalk.
And isn't this where we just had a tree removed?
We had an elm removed there, just in front of that, yep, last year.
Is, is that damage related at all? Do they have any kind of, it's just happens to be what?
It just happened, yeah.
Didn't know if there was any blight or disease.
No, no, it's just, yeah, it was just storm damage. It's gone left unstructural, pretty much.
Any questions about this tree?
Would the replacement be street side of the sidewalk, or?
Um, we would have to talk to Chapman Colan Gleason. I would rather put it as a setback planting, because it would have, you know, a better chance to live. So, that's something I could talk to Chapman Colan Gleason about.
And one other thing, this is just, I can't envision, but was there another tree put where the other one was taken down, or no?
No, because it was in pavement.
That's right, okay.
It was completely paved right after.
Okay. All right, anything else from this board before I hear from the public?
It looks like also to put it on the non-street side would allow that pavement to be continuous, as opposed to right now, there is a bit of a cutout.
Yep. Yeah, maybe the pavement would stay flat.
Okay, anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue?
Will we close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any further discussion?
I remove the approval of the removal of the One Sweet Gum tree located at 475 Main Street, and a replacement either street side or non-street side of the pavement.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, Jeremiah. I really appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work with these old trees that we have. I know we'll be seeing and hearing from you and some others.
But they are elegant. And we appreciate you trying to save them.
And we appreciate the resource of having UMass, you know, and these folks be able to come down and offer this technology that, as a town, we certainly couldn't ever have on our own. So, it's great to have that at hand. So, thank you. All right, we have another public hearing, an application for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and a change of ownership interest of an all-alcohol common victor license, 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, 30 Davis Straits Falmouth. Let me just read the public hearing. Is someone here for the application? Let me read this hearing. Notices hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC has applied for change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and a change of ownership interest of its all-alcoholic, all-alcoholic common victor license located at 30 Davis Straits Falmouth. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, December 16, 2019 at 7:30. On the above application, publication date, Friday, December 6, 2019, in the Falmouth Enterprise.
This is not the change of the manager at the establishment. This is a much bigger ownership entity kind of thing, right?
Yes.
I move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have interview, vote, and appoint committee members for the Transportation Management Committee. So, we have a number of applicants, and I would like to see us give each applicant three minutes to kind of tell us who you, we know who all of you are, first of all. You're all, all of you have been consummate volunteers for this town, number one. But just for folks to be able to just kind of tell us why they want to be on this committee, and ask a few questions. We do have five applicants? Six? No, five. I'm counting, five, okay. And so, I just want to make sure that we, we still do have a number of other items on the agenda. So, if we start with that guideline, I'm just going to go in order of how they're listed. So, Ed Dewitt, come on up.
I think we only have four people here tonight, so we won't.
Yes, so tonight, thank you, Doug. So, we won't vote tonight because someone can't be here. So, we'll hear from everyone, and then we'll vote at another date. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Ed Dewitt. I live in Precinct 1. I came to Falmouth in 1988 as a Coast Guard aviator, and we have stayed ever since. We picked Falmouth because we found it to be the most innovative town on Cape Cod. Forward-looking, creative, and so forth. And I think that your emphasis on transportation management sort of fits into our initial vision of, of Falmouth. I would also be remiss if I didn't say that the library played a big part of our selection of Falmouth as well. You may know my wife's a librarian that retired from the Falmouth Public Library. So, those, those factors came involved. I have a history of being involved in all kinds of different transportation types of things, from the Coast Guard to being certified by the American Association of Airport Executives, and able to run a airport, and involved in things like pavement management, so on. I was, for a short period of time, I was the Falmouth representative to the Steamship Authority, so I'm familiar with the operations there. And you may recall, a couple of years ago, I told you some thoughts of, that I had about the Steamship Authority as well. So, I think that's briefly why I think I can contribute to this effort. And I applaud you, no matter who you select, for stepping up and trying to coordinate transportation planning and management in the town.
Thank you very much. Any questions from this, from this board?
None at all. I found your resume and introduction very thorough and complete, and good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know Ed's qualifications well, but I was curious about your thoughts on development in town, and the way the Transportation Committee might intersect with that.
Well, I, I think that if you look at the comprehensive, local comprehensive plan and whatever, I, I would not call it a visionary approach to transportation. And I would like the Management Committee to take a more visionary approach. And I'll be self-critical here. I could have walked here tonight, and I didn't. And I think that, you know, I have to look at myself and, and sort of say, why didn't I walk here? Because it really is the most efficient and best way to have, to have gotten here. And I think that we have to sort of take some of the mindsets in terms of what's going on. I know that parking was a big issue at town meeting this year, and whether the town should acquire additional land exclusively for parking. I'd like to look at parking and sort of say, maybe we have enough parking, and we're just utilizing it incorrectly. And I think that that needs to be ruled out before you acquire additional parking. But it doesn't necessarily mean that you shouldn't, you know, buy the land. I would much rather see the land used as open space, or parkland for downtown. But, but I think there's some questions that need to be asked and answered, and have a lot of community input before you make those kinds of decisions. And I think that's where an advisory commission can really come in handy for the town.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Ed. We really appreciate it. And thanks for the, it's always, I'll just say in general, it's always really helpful when folks give us those thorough applications along with a resume or any kind of information, because it just allows this board to, to look at it in advance. So, thanks, that's very helpful. Okay. And was it John Keenan who couldn't be here? Oh, no, he's in the back. Come on up. It was Allison couldn't be here, okay. Welcome, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Come on up. Thank you as well. We got a lot of information from you.
Good evening, I'm John Keenan. I live in North Falmouth. I have for 45 years on a dirt road in the woods. And part of our struggle has been to keep it a dirt road. I've been in business as an architect in Falmouth for over 40 years. I've had my office on Main Street since 1995. Been involved in just about every major municipal project in town, as well as major projects all over the Commonwealth, and the Vineyard, and Nantucket. So, every, every building I've done, or my firm has done, has involved some sort of a transportation plan, I guess you'd call it, or lack of. I'm most concerned with the quality of life in Falmouth in the summer. It's brutal. It's getting, getting worse, and it's only going to get worse. People tell me that the traffic now, year-round, is like it was here in the summer 10 years ago. And we just can't keep continuing with that, that type of expansion. And I also think it's a statewide thing. You know as well as I do, you go anywhere, up 95, 93, 128, whatever you want to call it, and it is insane. So, I think our, our local, our local plan has to address the state plan, or at least try to complement it, or get involved somehow. Because it doesn't seem to be working. I'm interested in what they're going to do with the bridges. I know that doesn't affect us locally, but it's a big project. And it doesn't sound right from the beginning for me. So, I, I've served on a few boards in town, the Building Code Board of Appeals a while ago. I, I'm used to public meetings, the town meetings, and committees, and you name it. I've been there. So, I just want to contribute to the town.
Thank you very much. Any questions from?
Question, I was curious, what did you mean, that the bridge plan doesn't sound right to you?
Well, I mean, like, what I've heard of it is two, four, six-lane, or two, two bridges with six lanes each, over and back. And that's, why do you need six when there's only two on the other side? I just, it just seems like a nightmare beginning already to happen. If you keep big six, three lanes over, or six, actually, there's no place for them to go. So, why not have?
Might have other plans for the other highways later, I guess. I don't know.
I worked on the, I was involved in the Sagamore Bridge reconstruction, flyover, whatever you want to. whatever you want to call it. We did a lot of planning with that. We did the community center or the Cape Chamber of Commerce building there. But during that study, it was learned that sixty percent of the traffic that goes over the Sagamore Bridge comes from the west. It doesn't come from the north or the east. It comes from Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York. So, one of the things I haven't heard anybody say is, if you're coming to go down Cape, you should not be able to go over the Bourne Bridge. You're supposed to go to Sagamore. And that just creates a huge problem. If probably more than sixty percent... That was fifteen years ago, when they did that or planned that. It just didn't seem to... Nobody heard it, I don't think. The traffic is not what everybody thinks.
Interesting.
So, the bridges, I think, are going to cause us more trouble because it's going to push more people here. I know we can't stop them, but I think we have to find a way to do it better.
Interesting.
Any other questions from? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Ralph Herbst. Welcome, Ralph.
Good evening, folks. Ralph Herbst, Precinct Eight, thirty-year resident. I look at this as a challenge. My fourteen years on the Planning Board and ten years on the Community Preservation Committee introduced me to a lot of challenges in this town. And this is just one more that I think I would enjoy and have something to contribute to. Years ago, I helped the people at the fairgrounds deal with parking and transportation issues up there. There were people parking all over the place and infringing on personal property. We resolved all of that. And it was a nice way. I live up that way. I am a senior citizen and have the privilege of belonging to AARP. And there's a bulletin that's sent out monthly by them, and I happen to be reading it about a town called West Sacramento in California. And they did a survey because they think, they thought that things needed to be improved in their town, and transportation was one of them. In this article, it says, "In a survey, residents forty-five and over rated transportation as the most important feature for a livable community." I'm guessing that that town is probably similar in size to us. I called their Planning Board today, and I did not get a response. But what I was going to ask was, this program that they adopted in twenty-seventeen, which where they partnered with a company called Vaya, describes it as a blend of transportation between bus service and Uber. Now, we have transportation available in this town from taxis and Uber and Lyft, I guess. I don't use any of them. But those types of businesses would definitely be impacted if we adopted something similar to this. So, you definitely have to take the local businesses into consideration when you make something, make a change such as that. Did I understand, Madam Chairman, that I could ask questions of you?
You always can ask questions. That's just a regular rule of our job. You can always ask questions of us.
Well, I do have a couple of questions. As a matter of fact, I left a message for Mr. Suso this afternoon, but we couldn't hook up. And it's all about when you read the challenges that are before us with this committee, I noticed that in the newspaper, Mr. Patterson suggested that there be staff support for this committee. I also noted that Mr. Ray Jack suggested that they, we have a consultant if we adopted, if you adopted the Complete Streets Program. And then lastly, and somewhat selfishly, would there be funds available for a recording secretary? I've been on a lot of committees in this town, and if you try to serve on a committee and take the minutes at the same time, you are just not able to do your job. So, I would hope that the Selectmen would provide funding for those three areas. And I, too, come from a transportation background, and both Mr. Dewitt and I flew airplanes that could never land at the airport. So, with that, if you have a question for me, I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you, Ralph. Any questions?
How did I land in the airport?
One question. Will you be able to get along well with Mr. Dewitt if you're both appointed?
Yeah, I was Air Force, and he was Coast Guard. So, actually, the Coast Guard, I mean, the Navy Coast Guard beat Air Force this year. So, he's got one up on me.
Great. Thank you. I don't think there are any questions. We know certainly your vast experience, and I appreciate your submitting the application, just giving your thoughts. Thank you, Ralph. Okay, Jane Perry.
Take your time. Yep.
I don't use my timer on my phone much, so I apologize if for some reason it beeps. I'm just...
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Mr. Suso, Mr. Johnson-Staub. For the record, I am Jane F. Perry, Precinct Eight, Hatchville. And I rise this evening to ask for your vote, our little vote, to appoint me to the Transportation Management Commission. I'm sorry, I'm getting over cold. For the past thirty-two... I've lived in Falmouth for fifty years. And for the past thirty-two years, at the age of thirty-one and a half, I had to give up driving and riding my bicycle because of my vision. So, I decided that after that, how am I going to get around? How am I going to get to work when I did work? How am I going to get to church and do my daily errands? Well, I was introduced to the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, which was the V-Bus back then. Now, it's Dial-A-Ride. I also had a problem getting... I couldn't ride the Bonanza Bus going from Boston to Falmouth. They denied me transportation. So, with the Cape Workers' Rights of Disabled, I filed a civil mediation suit against Bonanza Bus, and I won. And I have four policies that they instituted. I don't know if they still carry the weight of Peter Pan. I have been one of the two longest-standing members of the Transportation Management Commission, myself and Tim Rowan, who is on the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. He served as the Bicycle Representative from nineteen ninety-six. I was also the Vice Chair from two thousand four to two thousand seven. I was on the League of Women Voters for the Transportation Unit, and we studied all transportation venues, including the Steamship Authority, which we have studied ad nauseam through the Transportation Management Commission for the past ten years that I served on, and we still do that today. I am the... I have ridden the Cape Cod RTA for the past thirty-two years. I've attended meetings representing the riders. And also, I was lucky enough to be appointed as Falmouth representative for two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen. Excuse me. I was also the non-voting disabled member to the Cape Cod RTA, which they usually appoint yearly, and it has to go from town to town. I have some thoughts about going forward, and my application has listed everything that I have done, basically, in this town. I have served on several committees. And I am very passionate about transportation and very committed and dedicated. I've gone to a Complete Streets seminar, three-hour seminar. So, I understand that, and I understand the issue of being disabled and not having to be able to get to meetings or going out after seven o'clock. And some people who are disabled have to work on Sundays, and that's where they get time and a half. There's no transportation on Sundays, very little for church. And our service has come back, cut back. We have a very serious, serious transportation issue in this town. People can't get to affordable housing. They can't get to their jobs and other issues. So, going forward, if I get appointed to this committee, these are some of the things that I think needs to be addressed. First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for re-establishing this committee. You know, I have been asking to get it re-established since it derailed in two thousand nine. We need to revise our mission statement, which is very antiquated and doesn't address the issues of transportation today. We need to put a get up and running on the town website with a Transportation Management link to let people know what is available for transportation in our town. Also, I think we should have a pamphlet that we can put in other areas to let people know what is available, not only for the public partners, but also for the private partners, such as the taxis, the Uber, and the Lyft. And it should be distributed, like in the town hall and the Chamber of Commerce, and it should have the emails and phone numbers and the list of information on how to use transportation in our town. I know you have charged this committee with a new, interesting, viable transportation issue, which actually isn't new. We started that a long time ago, and that was the Wish Trolley. It stood from, not Woods Hole Shuttle, but from Woods Hole to Shore Street Extension. And it went to the Surf Drive Beach, came up Walker Street to Main Street and down to Woods Hole. So, we are kind of reconstructing something that was, happened a long time ago. And I do have some thoughts to share with you, if you'd like, after my presentation.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Let me just ask the board.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Any questions from this board?
I know she's already answered the one I was going to ask about, you know, making sure that things are accessible. And also, that's a great point about the fact that our bus service is less than what we need.
Excuse me. Could you speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, I said, "That's a great point about the fact that the bus service is not so good on Sunday."
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A quick one. Jane, the... I'm very well aware of transportation challenges with folks with any kind of disability, having grown up in such a home. I'm wondering if you foresee any challenges with getting to meetings here?
Yes. We have no service after seven o'clock, except maybe in the summer, the Sea Line Bus. I think the last run out of Woods Hole is at six-thirty. So, you can get to Hyannis by seven-thirty, eight o'clock.
So, with respect to, if you were to be appointed on this committee, you would need specific hours for the committee to meet here? And what would be the last hour that you'd be able to meet?
I would like to see transportation at least until nine o'clock.
No, I think so. She's...
For your participation.
Ms. Mariana is asking about your participation. If you were appointed to this committee, would there be parameters, you know, like for the time that this committee would meet in terms of you getting back and forth?
Oh, well, that's not a problem, because I know how to use transportation, and whether it's the private partners or the public partners or friends or anything.
You know how to access it.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I think that's my question. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Jane. And thank you for including all the work that you've done. It was helpful to see that.
Thank you very much. So, you will not appoint this committee tonight?
Not tonight, because we have to interview one person who's not here.
That's pretty sad, because now we have to wait till the first of the year. And Mr. Suso and Mr. Brown wants this trolley up and running. So, as soon as we appoint them, and hopefully it's next January fifth, I believe is your next meeting, we need to get going, because we only have a small timeframe. And I believe there's going to be an earmarked article on Town Law in April. So, please, 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 please get this up and running. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Okay, we also have Paul Dryer, and he would be the Planning Board appointment. I don't know that...
We don't interview her.
We don't need to interview, but I know you're here, and we just want to point out that Planning Board has officially sent their letter saying that you will be their appointed designee for this committee. So, thank you for putting on another hat.
Madam Chair, should we note that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and the Historical Commission were still awaiting their designee and have asked for that to be transmitted?
And so, if we can just maybe remind them?
We'll do.
I know that they've been given... But remind them just so that we can...
Remind them again. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have Steamship Authority Working Group. So, this was a request that we received a couple of weeks ago for there to be a working group to identify and develop ways to mitigate traffic issues arising from Steamship Authority Woods Hole Ferry Terminal. And we put the call out. It was published in the paper. And we have had one applicant so far. And we're really only looking for two individuals. Or is this one going to be a staff person?
The task force is a staff person. And I know that Selectman Brown indicated an interest as well. So, the board, if you chose, could proceed with that second one. It's not listed as needing an interview necessarily.
Right. Okay, so, we have Mr. Trombo here. Welcome. How are you?
Thank you.
Do you know anything about the Steamship Authority?
Well, the Steamship is a black box in many ways, and studying it daily is almost not sufficient to understand it. The issue, in my view, is the huge impact that the Steamship has on, in winter, by my estimate, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred households, if you were to include North Falmouth, from which the Steamship also receives complaints about noise. That number might be much more. And then in the summer, that number may well double. So, that's the impact. As far as I can tell, the Steamship is really focused on its ramp-to-ramp Woods Hole Vineyard, Hyannis, Nantucket activity. And the impact on Falmouth is an externality in many different ways. And the Steamship has not taken into account Falmouth residents' interests. And they're, in my view, huge safety issues with moving almost all of the vineyard's fuel down through Falmouth. Many of these benefits to the vineyard, it's... One would have to look quite hard to find benefits to Falmouth for. So, I think it's great the Steamship is, at last, reaching out and has expressed interest in working with Falmouth and it seems the vineyard as well for this working group, which I hope can help provide some of the numbers which are so important for understanding this issue. Of course, the solution in part would be an off-Cape port, which the Steamship appears not to be planning for. And speaking of planning, we stand by our projection of the doubling of Steamship truck traffic on the four percent growth that we've seen in the last eighteen years would, seems likely to continue, and so a doubling by twenty thirty-eights.
Any questions for Mr. Trombo?
I'm very familiar with that. I've been to many meetings, and we've traveled to New Bedford together and investigated all the options over there. I guess the only question is, will you be able to be open-minded to the Steamship Authority and work with them, even though I know you've been critical over the past several years since I've known you? Not that it's just all, you know, critical. It's just you're mostly observant. But having been very outspoken in the past as a private citizen, now to be on this committee, we're going to have to try to work with the Steamship Authority. It's going to be a little bit different dynamic, because we're going to be interacting with them directly. I just want to make sure that you can be, you know, receptive to that.
Well, I'll do my best. My... One of my main missions and my interest in this group is trying to extract information from the Steamship, which we can do with Freedom for Information Requests. But I see this as a useful instrument, and the numbers stand by themselves with or without my criticism.
Certainly. I understand that. I just, I guess what I'm getting at is, we're going to now be working together with vineyard people, and it's going to be more of a team effort to try to come up with positive solutions. And I know that in your previous role as just a public advocate, and really just about the numbers and the facts, but now we're looking forward towards solutions. And so, I look forward to it. looking forward towards solutions, and so I look forward to it. And I think you'd be a perfect person for the job, but I just wanna make sure that you feel like you can work with them and not be, you know, adverse.
Well, I'll do my best not to be adversarial.
Okay.
Yeah?
I guess along that line, I was curious to know what your professional background was, and, you know, do you have any experience professionally or educationally that would help you serve on this in a kind of a constructive way, so that hopefully we could come up with some win-wins?
Well, I'm, I'm a researcher and work with numbers a lot, and I suppose that's been one of my, one of the tools I might, might bring to this position, is helping with some of the projections that, again, the Steamship doesn't seem to be focused on at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess a bigger question, not saying, for Mr. Trumbull, but we have two positions and one applicant. Is this one, it would be appropriate, because this is something I know that Doug was talking about, the task force, and is it appropriate for me to be an applicant for, as the upper position for the working group?
So just to remind folks what, yeah, let me just go over the two, the two things that they were asking for. So let me just go back to remind us, because I just had to review this too. So this is what they were asking. Designate two individuals to be its representatives on the task force, with one of those individuals ideally being a staff member with transportation and/or planning experience and responsibilities, and then two individuals, this is without any qualifying language, to be part of the separate working group. And then what they note for the task force is to work together to establish a long-range vineyard transportation task force, and work together with Martha's Vineyard Commission, the towns of Falmouth, Oak Bluffs, and Tisbury, and the city of New Bedford, and with public input to attempt to identify reasonable steps that can be taken to address issues and concerns about freight and other traffic in each of those communities on a long-term basis. So that task force is the, the one with one individual plus staff. And then the working group is to establish, let's see, to establish a working group with the Martha's Vineyard Commission, the towns of Falmouth, Oak Bluffs, Tisbury, to focus exclusively with input on identifying and developing reasonable and practical ways to monitor and enforce compliance with Steamship Authority's current noise mitigation policies, as well as identifying and developing additional ways to mitigate traffic issues that arise from Steamship Authority's Woods Hole Ferry Terminal operations, not just during the early morning hours, but throughout the day, which can be implemented sooner rather than later. So I believe Mr. Trumbull has applied for the working group seat, right?
Correct.
Because that's what we're, and so you're asking if it's appropriate for you to apply for that?
Right.
Okay, what are people's thoughts?
Or to be appointed.
Or to be appointed.
And I might have missed it. Who's the staff person?
We haven't talked, that's the task force.
That's the task force, so we haven't done that one yet.
Okay, just...
So, yep.
Making sure, because I know that...
So in other words, we...
Doug had applied, right?
Right, for the task force.
For the task force.
For the task force, okay.
I don't see anything that would exclude you from doing that.
I think that'd be great, actually.
I think that would be...
Would you be serving on both the task force and the working group?
No, I'm saying, I would be...
Oh, you would be on the working group?
Working group.
With Mr. Trumbull?
Okay, got it. And Doug Brown would be with the, with the staff member.
In lieu of a staff member?
No.
No, the task force is the only, so only the task force asks for a staff member. Working group says anybody. Task force says with preferably one staff member, so...
Just as I live in Precinct One, and I work in Precinct One in Woods Hole during the summer, deal with the traffic issues in Woods Hole a lot.
Right.
It's something that I'm confronted with.
So it'd be Jones and Trumbull for the...
Working group.
Working group, and Brown, and a staff person for...
For the task force, right? Someone from planning and/or some designated individuals.
If, if it's the board's desire, you could just indicate that the town manager should designate the appropriate staff member to serve on the task force. I'd be happy to do that.
So that'll make, that'll be my motion in its entirety, what I just laid out.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Okay.
I'm gonna stand.
Yes. You'll stand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Great. So we can just get back to them and, and let them know that we've have our selection.
There is a question in the audience.
Yes, yeah, of course, come on up.
What's the, uh...
Yeah, I gotta come up to the mic, sorry.
Mr. Jones on the Steamship task force. But if I am not on the Transportation Committee, we just talked about, I would love to be involved in the Steamship.
I think probably Mr. Jones could keep you apprised on the schedule.
Yeah, we just voted, but we can, but these are gonna be some public input. Hopefully the idea of this is to gather some more public input on some of these iss, input on some of these issues. So definitely...
In my professional career, I've worked for, I've worked on every terminal in the Steamship system, designed the Hyannis Ferry Terminal and all of its amen, you know, amenities. And we've done several projects on the Vineyard for the town of Oak Bluffs, the town of Vineyard Haven, I mean, the town of Tisbury, the town of West Tisbury.
Great.
And we've been before the commission, and we know that operation probably back and forth as well as anybody, any professional.
Great, thank you. I'm sure that they'll be reaching out to you. Thank you.
Specifically, do you know if you were thinking about the working group or the task force? The task force is the bigger one dealing with freight and large issues, while the working group is just, I think, dealing with traffic issues in the Woods Hole area.
Thing that sticks in my mind about the Steamship is that last September, a year ago, 2018, there was an article in the paper, in the Vineyard paper, that the Steamship reported they had 57,000 vehicle trips just in the month of August of 2018. And I, that's 3,000 a day. And I haven't heard what they did this August, but I'm sure it was more.
I'm sure Nat could tell you right off the top of his head. I think Nat could tell you right off the top of his head.
He stepped out while he left.
Oh, he's gone.
But anyway, it's, uh...
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Great. All right, we have, let's see.
Affordable.
Okay, Affordable Housing Committee. Ms. Price, welcome. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Angelae Scott Price. I am a recent proud owner of a home in East Falmouth, and I work in Woods Hole. I'm a member of the Woods Hole Diversity Advisory Committee. We are charged with trying to make Woods Hole a more diverse and inclusive place for everyone. And in working on that, we have realized that even when we bring in diverse talent and great people, they need somewhere to live. And almost everyone who I know, who I work with, they have somewhere to live during the rest of the year, but during the summer, it's hard for them to find somewhere to stay. So I started attending the Affordable Housing Committee meetings a few months ago. I'm very interested in the work that they're doing, and I wanna be more involved, and I wanna be able to vote.
Great, thank you.
From your fact, you've already been going to the meetings.
Yeah.
Answers any question I might have.
Agreed.
Any questions?
Nope. If you've already been interested in attending, I'm all for appointing you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I would move, we approve Angelae Scott Price to the term ending June 30, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Congratulations on your house. That's my sister's neighborhood. Good neighborhood.
Thank you for saying my name right.
All right, we have two applications for Falmouth Cultural Council. We have Ms. Bucino and Ms. Rowland, or Roland, excuse me.
Which one?
It doesn't matter, anyone, you'll do it in order. Ms. Bucino?
Mm-hmm.
Am I saying your, your name wrong? Is it Bucino?
This is Ms. Roland.
It's Ms. Rowland.
Marilyn Rowland.
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Rowland, because I don't think we have our other applicants. So please go right ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. I've worked with the Falmouth Cultural Council for about three years now. I run, I help run the, the art market in the summertime, and I'm also on the Board of Arts Falmouth. I'm on the Board of Cape Community Orchestra. I'm heavily involved in the arts, and I just thought I'd like to be on the council, since I'm working with it.
And you're already doing so much of the work anyway. Thank you. Have you been able to sort of attend any of their, you've, in, in working?
I've been attending meetings since September.
Okay, wonderful, great. Any questions?
No, I'm a college of arts.
Don't you dare, right?
I, I guess I have one question. Since you mentioned that you currently work for the Arts Council, is that like a...
I'm a volunteer.
Volunteer, okay, good.
It's a volunteer organization.
Right.
It's the art, both of them are. The Arts Falmouth is separate from Falmouth Cultural Council.
Okay, thanks.
And I would just say, I would love to just see some more events from this, you know, and, and just hear from the council on ways that this board and this town can support some more of those cultural events that...
Wonderful.
You know, I know that they get some money from the state, and they do some things with that, which, which are great, but often hardly anybody knows about some of the things until they're, they're already upon us, so...
We have the, we have an art market that helps raise money for the council, which runs every Thursday down at the band show. And more publicity on that would be great. His attendance is fairly low.
Thank you very much. Any, any other questions? Do you have a motion?
Well, just, since this is non-regulatory, we do not have to interview people, and we have two positions and two applicants. I'd be in favor of nominating or approving both the applicants, Alicia Bucino and Marilyn Rowland, to the terms ending June 30, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Great, okay. Thank you. All right, Human Services Committee. Don't think I see Deb Burglin here, but that's the same kind of situation.
I agree.
Right? And I know, you know, her background is totally sufficient, it's extensive. She's deeply connected to this community. She has a child in this community, and is, and already provides lots of services to folks here, so I would be comfortable appointing her without an interview.
I just think that the people that we've been interviewing tonight and have come forward for these committees are so well-qualified, and really, it's amazing the kind of people we can get to join these committees. So I'd be happy to appoint Deb Burglin to her term ending June 30, 2022, to the Human Services Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
And we do have two more vacancies on that committee.
Yes, so folks, if people are looking for something, this is a really great committee, and there's never a shortage of important work that they're doing. So, you know, please reach out and, and put your application in.
But I, I would have add to what Mr. Jones has just said, because I think we're very blessed in this community to have so many qualified people serving on so many of our committees. We really benefit so many ways from their work and their expertise and experience.
Definitely.
I find that to be the most difficult part of this job, is when you have five candidates that are all very good, and only four positions, the hardest part of this job.
It's a good problem to have, even though it makes it hard. I mean, the level of expertise is really so unbelievable. Okay, we have interim report from the Edward Marx Building Advisory Committee.
Good evening. I'd like to pick up on that theme about over-qualified and terrific people serving. I can't recall having served on a, a committee that was as focused, committed, and diligent in its efforts as this one. I'm really proud of everything that's been done. We owe you an interim report. It didn't require Dolly to bring it in.
There's points already just for that.
These are in order, you could just pass them along.
Make sure you introduce yourself, Barbara.
Oh, sorry.
For the audience.
Thank you, good point. Thanks, Sam. Barbara Wayne, I'm the chair of the Poor House Edward Marx Committee Advisory, the Advisory Committee. Is this system on? Because I've got the presentation on the desktop, so I don't wanna foul something up, Peter.
Peter will.
There's no...
Just need to warm it up and log in.
Warm it up.
Meaning you hit a button.
Do I have to tap dance in the middle?
Yes.
Sing to it and...
Jazz or contemporary is fine.
Jazz? How about left-footed? Oh, whoops. Okay, perfect.
Is that all right?
Yep, and then full view, since you're standing in front of it. We loaded, you'll, when you open your folders, you'll notice there are two pieces to our report.
Oh, there it is. There you go.
Yeah. Great, thank you very much. So the, why isn't that working? Hm. Page up and down should work.
You just need to use the mouse.
Left, right?
Left, right, you know.
All right. No, nothing's budging, Peter.
Let's see.
I have to dance further, I guess. Why is it? All right, okay. So keeping in mind the fact that you have a regular TV audience, I wanted to put in front of them, you are all very familiar with our mission, but what I've done here is to, hopefully it's visible to you, there's so much light bounce here, I can't tell. What we've done is...
Want me to turn off some light for you?
Yeah, a couple. I think that's the best one.
Leave that one off.
Yeah, that's the best we can do, I think, Doug.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, so this is where we...
To see it down here as well.
Oh, I know that. I'm quite familiar, thank you.
That's great.
Yep. So the portions that you see in red are the portions of our mission statement that we undertook initially. The mission statement isn't per se organized in a chronological order, so you can see that we've taken on, in particular, two pieces. This has been since we met in Ju, in July. So who are these people I'm raving about? We're really lucky to have such talent in terms of the construction slash historical preservation know-how. Three key people, two of whom are here tonight, Tom Renshaw of Woods Hole, and Mike Duffany, two of these people. And we've been lucky, well-served by Cory bringing in historical preservation know-how, and Doug, who's done both. I mean, he's, you know, so he's, thank you, Doug. So this is what I wanna pose to, to everyone. Why, why care about this building? I mean, we've got lots of buildings to, to worry about. So what I've done is, just in bold, to try and raise the key points here that we think are important for, for you as our town leaders to think about. First of all, it's the oldest municipal building in, in Falmouth. You know, the, the main part of the building that we're discussing goes back to 1769. It became the poorhouse in 1814 fully. It, architecturally, it has an important role to play, because for whatever things that have happened to it over the last couple of hundred years, the exterior of the building is authentically colonial. I think more importantly, it has a social history that sits on top of, it's not just an architectural issue. And it has served Falmouth long before we had a hospital, long before we had mental health care. So bundled into this one building was an attempt to serve the quote "poor." Under the name "poor," it really referred to a variety of things, including disabled people, mentally ill people, town drunks, and, and a number of people who were left desolate, such as, you know, if you, if you, if, if someone was a wife with children of a sailor who went to sea and did not come back, the whole family economy was wiped out. So the service is quite, quite broad. It's considered such an important building that the National Register had, that's an honorarium. People are confused about National Register. It's an honorary designation. But it takes a lot to get it done, and thanks to primarily the Historical Commission and assorted consultants in 1998, it, plus the Methodist burial ground next door, which is where many of the indigent were buried, together were given a national registration. And, and finally, you know, as a person, you know, we have a modest, small nonprofit called Falmouth Preservation Alliance, and we have watched in, building after building, every year, kind of go under. And often, it's because, not to blame the town, what we call demolition by neglect, meaning the building just sits there and gets in worse and worse shape, and then the only option is tear it down. Developers have a penchant for just removing historical buildings. I don't wanna name any. And inappropriate renovations, you know, over, over the years, people who really don't know what they're doing with an historical building can add, add on, whether it's annexes... know what they're doing with an historical building can add on, whether it's annexes, additions, towers, whatever. And as a consequence, we lose our history that way. So here's an opportunity where the town can prevent its loss, because it's a municipally-owned building. So here's what I would like to share with you about how we've been pretty busy. We first met in July, that was the first time we had all of our members. And the initial decision we made, which was a real hustle, was to put in proposal to Falmouth CPC to underwrite what's called an historic structures report. And you will find in your folder on the left-hand side behind this presentation as a resource for you, a brief number 43, which is from the National Park Service, explaining this report. It is really the the foundation, the bed on which you then do preservation. So we got our proposal in. This past week, we learned that that's going forward, so we're relieved. What we did simultaneously was to draft an RFP and send it to some consultants who might be some of the parties actually doing the report. And our reason for that was to demonstrate to the CPC that the money that we're asking for was grounded in reality. And of five recipients, three replied. So we feel as though we're in pretty good shape, and of course, we know better, we know that we're not in charge of issuing the RFP, but it's ready for examination by Town Hall. So that's one. We subsequently also met with architect and what I'm calling the Campus Parking Committee, and we discovered that there were some major mistakes in terms of lighting and sidewalk that affected this building. Because as, and I understand the orientation, people are thinking about what's going on in that area as all about the senior center, the new senior center. And and there was no representation by our committee at a point where lighting and sidewalk and things like that were being considered. We hope that's gone away. We spent considerable time just gathering documents. We've looked at the current architectural plan, which is still at the concept stage, awaiting a more reasonable HVAC proposal. It's our understanding from Mr. Suso and Mr. Johnson, Johnson Staub, that the current HVAC plant is too expensive for the building. So we're in a kind of wait mode on that, but that's parked over on the side. We've got plenty to do. And very importantly, we set up a subcommittee of our experts in construction and asked them to look at what can what should be preserved and and/or repaired on the main floor in anticipation of a move-in by the Human Services Department. So that report will be coming to you with Mike and Tom. We're also preparing an application for a specific fund that is one of the Massachusetts Historical Commission funds. And the interesting part about this is we have a really good shot, I believe, at getting that money, because Falmouth is a certified government. I don't know if any of you have worked with that term before, but because the town has an Historical Commission that handles, of course, historic district things as well, as you know, and because it has seven districts, historic districts, et cetera, all of these things are known by the state, and they consider towns that have these qualifications to be better stewards, if you will. It's an opportunity for us to apply for some money that would help cut the cost with the CPC, because we'd like to go back to them again, as you'll find out. We're meeting with David Vera this Thursday. He's coming in, and we're going to brainstorm sources, other sources he may know about that will fund a municipal building. That's a problem. Many of the foundations that we're looking at will only give money to nonprofits. And so the question is, where else? How can we broaden the body of sources for that? So with respect to the committee as a whole, assuming you allow us to go forward, we're ready to charge off on a variety of topics that are independent of what has to happen on the first floor for the Human Services Department. For example, we can develop a restoration plan for the exterior and look for monies for that, and that is does not in any way impede the town's plan to move into the first floor. That's just an example. So that's where we're at. That's how we're looking at 2020. And I will just take your questions if you have some. Otherwise, I'm going to ask Mike and Tom to come up and do the second part, which is the work of the subcommittee, and that's on the right-hand side of your folder. Any questions on this part?
Any questions for Barbara?
I have just one, and I hadn't noticed it before, but in the start of your presentation, you mentioned that it's this building is an honorary member of the National Register?
Yes.
Is there any significance to the term honorary? Is that?
No, no, no. All of the National Register is an honorary status.
So it's just standard?
Standard.
Okay, thank you.
I just put that word in because people think that a lot of things go with that that don't. More goes with it from the Mass Historical Commission, preservation restrictions that are on that building, both internally and on the exterior. Okay, those are real.
Thank you so much, Barbara.
Okay.
And Tom and Mike. I have a question just while you're loading that.
Shirley.
This is not, just kind of a historical question, but are there any pictures that exist when it was at its original location in Hatchville?
Oh, no. Seventeen hundreds.
Because it was moved when? It was moved in the.
Didn't have photographs then.
No, no photography.
It would have to be a painting.
Yeah, it would have been a sketch or something.
But we don't have anything.
No, it's very fuzzy. The the owner, Peter Yost, left Falmouth around the time that the town wanted and needed a poorhouse, because there was a pretty major recession going on, and he headed out to the Midwest. So the building became available. Also, just as a small FYI, every time people hear the word tavern, they have, you know, party beer-drinking sort of scenarios. Tavern was a colonial term for an inn, so there would have been the meal preparation and stuff on the ground floor and a couple of rooms upstairs for rent.
I was wondering if we had any any visual at all of that?
No.
Or where it was? Do we know? We don't know?
Roughly on Sandwich Road in the Hatchville area.
Five or six mile move.
Hold on one second. Where's my she who does not bring, wear her glasses for God knows what reason? I just want to, oh, here it is. Excuse me. Hard to believe, I used to do this full-time for a living. Okay. Mike, here, this is forward. When you want it, when you want it, forward.
For the record, my name is Michael Duffany. I sit on the committee with Barbara, Tom, and a number of others. This particular part of the report, I'll try to go through it relatively quickly, was put together by Tom Renshaw, Corey Pacico, Christian Valley, and myself. We met and took pictures. Let me back up and say, Tom put together, I believe, it's in your package, some very well-written handwritten notes, and he also did some drawings, some renderings of some of the original features of the windows in the building and how, you know, what we would be looking for. So then we said, you know, why don't we go in and memorialize some of this? So you'll see in the in the report that we did go and and take pictures and so forth. Our charge, as Barbara said, is really to to try to see what the features of the building are that has this this internal restriction, if you will, historic, you know, preservation restriction on it. So the inside of the building is what we really need to to focus on. And so that said, we looked at the whole building, even though we know you're only looking for us to talk about the first floor, but we felt it was important to to really document what else is in the building, okay? And so some work beyond that is may be necessary, as we talked a little bit about the HVAC, because we've got to be careful it doesn't compromise some of the features of the building. So Tom may want to speak a little bit more to this, but some of these windows, Tom Renshaw, are actually restored back in the 90s, in the early 90s. And and there's an, and so in the in the Human Services Room, if you will, the room that has been completed, that work has been has been completed. On the west side of the building, some of that has been done, but a lot of it still remains to be done. We're fortunate to have to have Tom, who's a tremendous historian that knows the everything about what the correct windows are and so forth in the building. There are a lot more pictures than you'll than you'll see here. The doors, this is the door, that's a four-panel door, it's very, very much like the, in keeping with all the doors that were on the first floor. This particular door and what at the head of the stairs, the one on the on the right-hand side, shows the the hardware, the porcelain hardware that you have, and then the pins on the door that are different than a traditional hinge that's there now. The door, the door that's been stripped has has had all the the wrong features applied to it. So we're showing you that that is a correct door, and on the right-hand side of that is the correct hardware, which does exist. In the room in the corner, in that northeast corner or northwest corner, excuse me, there's a lot of original features in that room that have not been touched. Some of the pictures you'll you'll see show other stuff in the room there, but you can see a little bit of the baseboard there. In the main room, you can see a couple more of the windows. This one here shows some of the wainscoting, which it's on most of the outside walls. It's on virtually none of the interior walls, a little here and there, but for the most part, it's on the outside walls. And again, the one on the right-hand side, the gray one, is pretty much an untouched one that's in that northwest room. We have the floors, which really run the gamut here. They originally were were beach, which is outside the circle. When they went in and did some supporting in the back in the 90s, they replaced it with what they thought the floor was. They thought it was maple, and so they did a reasonable match, but it was beach. So there there, and you can see, you know, the original floor. Then in the cubicles are shown in the right-hand picture, you can see by the tape and by the flooring itself what some of those cubicles were, that, and this is on the first floor. On the second floor, it exists as well. It's just completely unfinished. So this is, these pictures are actually on the second floor, just to show more of the of the features. You can see the wainscoting on the outside walls on both of the photos. The closet was added. The windows, again, are they're of different eras, okay? It all has horsehair plaster. This is on the second floor. Just wanted to show, this is a for for old-time carpenters, this is kind of a breathtaking picture here on the left-hand side. It does mean a lot to most people, but that is one board that was put up and then split to make the lathe, okay? This thing is really pretty cool. So even if we don't do this on the building, which we probably aren't going to do, we should we should open some of this up, picture frame it and show it as as what that was. Because if you look at that really closely, there's a board that's about eight inches wide and is split into about seven pieces, so that the horsehair gets up inside of it. On the right-hand side, again, it's just another picture showing some wainscoting. There are two different types of wainscoting in the on the wall, on one wall, and then there's a third type on the back wall. This is that closet, the little treasure trove in the corner, that houses some of the original wallpaper, some of the original wainscoting. There, there's that the door that we dug out to take pictures of, that door. And then, of course, it shows some of the wainscoting and then some other details in the in the very far corner that's really difficult to pick up in the picture. Again, different windows of different eras, but the sill details you'll see are pretty much intact. These go back to the late 1800s. And then Tom did restore a bunch of them again in the in the early 90s. The, some of these windows are actually three over three windows as opposed to six over six windows. So that really runs the gamut. So then the next steps for for, in our opinion, is for us to meet with the architects, to show some of what we have discovered in there, to make sure that that is that is respected, and when they move forward to to do, you know, it's the plans for the rest of the of the first floor. Again, review that HVAC system and make sure that it doesn't compromise any of the any of the features that we've found. And then assess this rear L on the back of the building that houses the bathroom and that's, and it's just several, just open rooms at the moment. When, and and in your package, you may even see, there's a picture that there's about seven types of wainscoting in in that back L, okay? About every eight feet, it changes right through the room, almost like it was done, like an example of a trip back through time. So, and we'd like to extend our analysis to the to the second floor, again, just to point out, before they get in there and get going on it and and make mistakes by accident, if you will, we'd like to point out what some of those those features are so that they are protected. Tom, do you want to add some?
I guess I do have something I would like to say.
Sure, please. We're very fortunate to have you.
I'm Tom Renshaw of Leslie Street in Woods Hole, and I've been involved in that building for quite a while, since in the early 90s. Well, no, the early 90s was when the the Artist Guild was still there and they, and it was the beginning of the effort to sort of authenticate the historical value of the building. And there was, there's a wonderful historical condition study done back then, which which is amongst the papers that we put together. Then in around, in the late 90s, there was a bunch of turmoil, and the building was in both who was going to use it and what would happen. It got shut down because the Artist Guild had some things going on there that didn't satisfy the building commissioner. And then there was all sorts of political turmoil that ended up with the the Artist Guild not being there, finding a new home, which tied in with other useful political things in town, so there were, but it left the building as it was. And the efforts by the town included engineering reports, too, that that suggested that came up with a plan of a renovation or preservation of this building, which this is where I got involved. Gene McCluskey came to me and said, does this look right to you? And I looked at these plans, and they had no respect for what this thing was. This is a timber-framed building. It's just been standing for hundreds of years, and it's perfectly fine. There are certain things that need to be repaired. But the engineer that came up with a plan decided the way to fix this building was to put in a steel frame, which would involve cutting through the framing, the timbers, the girders and everything, to to make it somehow immensely strong, which was by no means necessary. So I got involved trying to look at this, and then the Historical Commission, of which Gene was a member and Marilyn Smith was, they said, let us come up with another engineer to report it. And they used the proceeds of the Book of Falmouth to hire a man named John Looney, who was an engineer and an architectural firm, to come up with an alternative plan, which is what the town ended up doing. They repaired what was there. They respected the thing. They they did, they were able to analyze the elements by what they really were, not by SPF, you know, paper cutter standards of modern building. So, and that was how it happened. And and as a success, following that, they they made these renovations to accommodate the Retirement Board, and these things had to be done, like handicapped access and so on. And that 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 was done, it's sort of as a separate atrium, so it didn't really interfere with the building. But overall, the building was respected, and it was, it was a nice job they did. And it was like the first step towards putting this thing back together. And then part of that was the work that I I did myself, restoring the windows, and that, and that was done in conjunction with what Steve Misona did in the in the lead abatement. And it was all done sort of very systematically and reasonably, and it. abatement, and it was all done sort of very systematically and reasonably, and, and it's in a, it's a very nice condition right now, the downstairs. The, the work kind of stops in a corner, the windows, for most of the place, have been restored, are back together, and, and, and are, there's a couple of things that more that need to be done. I'd like to see this whole process continued, I'd like to be involved in it, and that's why I'm on this committee. And so, I, I hope that, that, you know, what we've done will allow us to be part of the discussions with architects and engineers and, and, and people who are going to use it, and also, we are adding this element of, we really want to see the whole thing carried through, whether the exterior, the second floor, and have this, you know, wise decisions based on our experience, so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tom, thanks. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I just, and to finish up, that if you would like to do another tour, or if you think it'd be beneficial for others to do a, a tour, I know that myself, I have a lot more respect for what's in that building than, than the first day I walked in it, be, thanks to Tom and to, and to Corey and to others that are, that know a lot more about the, the historic elements. So, the original tours weren't very exciting, but if you want to come on another tour, I think we could make it exciting this time.
Very high expectations.
If you have any questions.
That's a hard sell.
Yeah. It doesn't take much to excite this board, so, I mean, that was actually pretty, that was, yeah, yeah, we really, it was pretty amazing, but it's very helpful, thank you for both these, it's really helpful to see sort of the work that you guys have done, and then also, just to, to get those visuals of some of those different historical aspects that, you know, when you walk into it to an untrained eye, it's, it's kind of a checkerboard of different styles, and it's hard to discern what has value and, and what is something that, you know, is sort of more recent, or has been altered so much, that it doesn't reflect that initial, that initial building that it was, so thank you, this is really helpful, and, and obviously, as this process goes forward, you know, we'll see what comes back in terms of that funding to get that study going. Thank you very much. Any other questions or thoughts?
No, I'm just saying, a very hard-working group, they're over there, meeting every two weeks, and spending their time documenting everything that's in the building, and also, thanks for looking into those other possibilities of grant funding, because it's great, because we don't want to just make the CPC pay for everything if we can avoid it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we have a status report on grinder pump partial payment. Ms. Lowell, welcome.
Good evening. So, I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the wastewater superintendent, and I'm here to speak tonight about, as you said, grinder pump reimbursement. Brief background, as you know, the Little Pond Sewer, as part of the Little Pond Sewer Project, the town's contractor installed sewer pipes in the roads and services from the, the pipe in the street to the property line, and it was each property owner's responsibility to connect their building to the sewer at the property line. And about half of the property owners in the sewer service area could connect their building to the service at the street via gravity, via gravity pipe, and about half of the property owners in that area were in what we call the low-pressure portion of the system, which means that they needed to install a grinder pump to connect their building to the sewer system. And there was concern expressed early on in the project by the Little Pond Service Area property owners about potential fairness issues and the difference between the requirements to connect to, connect the two types of houses, or to the, make the connections in the two areas. So, the, the Board of Selectmen met about this, discussed this, the town manager formed a subcommittee to talk about this, and the board voted a grinder pump policy in May of 2016, which made a number of statements and a number of commitments, one of which was that the town would provide, would purchase and provide the grinder pumps to the property owners that needed to install them.
Do you want to advance that slide, Amy? Pardon me?
Sure. The, the policy also included the statement that the town would provide modest compensation, or a subsidy, for one time, partial reimbursement of grinder pump installation cost, to be triggered by completed town inspection of both grinder pump installation and the septic system abandonment. So, it's this statement in the policy that we are here to talk about tonight. This policy was intended to apply to single-family residential properties, which is the majority of the properties in the sewer service area. The project, now that the project is complete, the town has sufficient information to discuss this policy. Properties have been connected, and there's a lot more information there, than there was when this was first voted. When you look at a large number of costs, it turns out that the average cost to complete a pump connection was approximately $1,800 more than the average cost to complete a gravity connection. This average number is based on contract cost data that we received from 455 residential sewer connections, which is, and about roughly half of each type of connection. The data source was, or this data was provided to the town by three different contractors that each did, performed more than a hundred of the sewer connections, as well as when the, when the town did an extension of, performed one of the last extensions of the connection deadline, we required homeowners to provide a copy of their contract in order to get that extension, to make sure that they were making progress towards the connection goal. So, we also have that contract cost data on which to base this number. So, costs for connections obviously does, did vary, based on a lot of factors, but that's the average cost data base, or average cost number based on a large number of connections.
The pumps themselves were provided by the town?
Right.
And in addition to that, was a fairly lengthy policy to cover those pumps for, I thought we got an extended warranty on those with the company?
Right, so the, the policy had a number of, of features, one, the, the, most important, or the initial one, was that the town would provide the pumps, and then the town was, was going to reimburse, reimburse for a portion of the cost to install it. But the town also provided a five-year warranty with each of those pumps, and committed to maintaining them after that, in perpetuity. The town, the last part of that policy was that the town would buy, provide new pumps at the end, when those pumps reached the end of their useful life. There are caveats about appropriate maintenance, or appropriate behavior with the pumps, and, and not throwing things down the pump that would destroy them, or down the drain that would destroy the pumps, so there are boundaries on that, but that's the basic commitment that was made. I'm sorry, also, one more thing was generator service, when, in case of an extended power outage, the Board of Selectmen said that the town would provide generator service to, to pump down the pumps.
Sam, did you have a simple?
Yeah, Amy, I presume, in terms of differentiating between the costs of those that have gravity feet and those that have grinder pumps, that all required indoor plumbing changes, so those costs would be pretty much the same regardless of what kind of exterior harm.
So, the cost varied quite a bit between properties, based on a lot of different factors. Not every property needed indoor plumbing changes, in some cases, the contractor could just connect to the septic line where it came out of the house and connect to the, to the lateral of the street, but the, the cost to connect varied tremendously from property to property, based on things like the distance of the home from the street, and the route that the pipe was going to have to take to the street, or the length of the route the pipe was going to have to take to the street, the depth of the excavation. One of the biggest factors in cost for any one connection is, is just the, the cost of restoration, there, you know, some people have patios, some people have decks, there's all the, you know, lands, expensive landscaping, or just grass, so those things, the reason we're talking about a, an average number is that I think it is impossible for the town to try to deal with all those different factors and talk about individual costs and making each person whole. I think the, the intent was not to get to a, a perfect whole for everybody, but to provide a, a reasonable, a partial reimbursement that was appropriate based on, you know, the average condition. So, that's why I was providing an average number here.
Thank you.
One, one more thing I should mention about, so, the grinder pump sewer connections did require an electrical service, so, in general, a grinder pump connection would require a deeper excavation at that one location to install the pump, and then, electrical service. In some cases, a few cases, not many, property owners had to upgrade their electrical service, they didn't have a, an existing 30-amp breaker that was available for this work, so they actually had to upgrade their electrical for this work. But, the, in, just in general, the grinder pump installation was, this connection to the sewer was, was more complicated and required the electric.
I don't remember the exact data, but 1,800 sounds exactly like what I thought was being predicted about three and a half years ago, that we expected it to be about that different, is that, am I remembering?
I don't, nobody knew exactly where we would be, but yes, I, this is definitely within the range of what we, what I remember being discussed as well. So, funding availability, if the 680 residential property owners who installed grinder pumps were reimbursed $1,800 apiece, the total cost would be 1.224 million. Sufficient funds do remain under Article 28 of April 2014, that was the Little Pond Sewer Service Area appropriation, so there's sufficient funds to cover this 1.2-plus million, as well as the pending Borns Pond Inlet Widening Project. Article 28 of, of April 2014 had a, several different items that it, that it covered, and those aren't, the allocation for those wasn't specifically listed within the article, but there was a, a presentation at the time about what that article was for, and everything, all the work there is complete, except for some lift station work, which is still continuing under that appropriation, and most notably, the Born Pond Inlet Widening Project, which you know is, is, from other presentations, is on its way, but is perhaps a year from implementation. But, looking at the funding status, the, the status of the budget at this point, there is sufficient funding available for both of those commitments. So, I wasn't prepared to talk about process yet tonight, this is, this is what I was prepared to talk about tonight, but there will be, we will need to have a follow-up on how we do this, and what the requirements for it would be, and what the schedule would be, and I, that would be, I assume, at a future Board of Select.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just, I know I've been asking Tom to answer about this, but every four months, so.
Yeah, that happens. Great, thank you.
Have, have all the properties actually hooked up now?
There are seven that are required to connect that have not yet connected, one of which I expect to be connected in the next two weeks, but out of 1,350, I think that's great, but there are, there are still a few challenges, but we're picking away at those.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much for that report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, next, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, we're going to have a presentation and vote on application from Falmouth Housing Corp. for 10 units of affordable workforce housing to be constructed, 591 Gifford Street, Gifford Workforce Phase Two. Ladies, come on up. Linda.
Good evening, Linda Clark, President of Falmouth Housing Corporation. I'm here this evening, as you know, to ask the board to vote on a recommendation from CPC for $65,000 for our upcoming project. It is workforce housing, actually, it's workforce phase-two housing, it's the phase-two of a two-phase project over in Gifford Street, they're one-bedroom units, all affordable, 50 and 80 percent units. We have applied for our pre-application for the state for funding, that occurred actually back November 25th, the working group got together very, very quickly to help us with that, so we were able to meet the deadline. We have received word last week that we have been approved to move forward to a full application, which will be submitted February. We are hoping to receive funding in June or July of 2020, and start construction as soon as Phase One is complete and occupied, which is September of 2020.
Any questions on this particular, yes, Peter?
Just, perhaps for the public, the board has a memo from Carla Ferroni, our housing coordinator, just providing some of the context, the, our fund, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, has an uncommitted balance of about $123,000, so the request from the Falmouth Housing Corp. for this project is within the funding amount, but is a preliminary amount, with the, the Falmouth Housing Corp. has expressed its intent to come back for the balance of the $65,000 per unit, total of $650,000, but this is certainly something that, the request that is before you tonight is something that-
We can do.
-that we can do, yes.
Great, and thanks to Carla for updating, all these, you know, we have these votes for projects that are really far down the line, and sometimes, it's, it's hard to really have in the forefront exactly where that, that fund is at, at any given moment, so it's really helpful to have that, that information, so thank you. Yeah?
I might just mention that as liaisons to the Community Preservation Committee itself, they're pretty much broadly supportive of all of this, and have, you know, given us the recommendations, so this falls in line with the special legislation for the fund. So, I think we're, we're basically, you know, covering all the bases, and I think the Community Preservation Committee has provided us with letters that basically indicate that their needs assessment conducted over the last couple of years have always cited, housing is the most important need that we have in town, and then particularly, the rental units, and, and these one-bedroom units are the peak of the priority list. You know, we hear arguments about two- and three-bedroom units, but the fact is that the greatest need is for single-bedroom units, so this project, you know, tries to address the greatest need that we have in town, so I really thank Falmouth Housing Corp. for having the property and coming up with this development plan that allows us to move forward.
Yes, so we have Little Pond Place, which is a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, we'll be coming online with that in August of 2020, 100 percent affordable, and then we'll have 10 units of Gifford Workforce Phase One, right around the same time, that's going to get a little hairy, so there's 50 units that we're going to bring back to the town as far as affordable housing, in 2020.
That's great, I mean, that's, that's got to be some level of, of record for, particularly for, you know, units at that level of just, it's not, you know, what we see with so many developments where it's a small, limited number in a large development of a 40B or things like that, to just kind of make that threshold, this is a completely different way of, of addressing the issue of housing, so.
It is, and all, all the units that Falmouth Housing Corporation develops, they're all affordable.
A great location, I mean, Gifford Street-
Exactly.
That's just, you know, you're not that far out from town, we've talked about this, if we can get the transportation to go down that road, it will really be an asset, but close to some other services and, and not really far from downtown, but, um, what a great, what a great spot.
Right, the transportation is going to be a piece that is going to be important to that area. We currently have 50 units, at the end of Phase Two, we'll have 70 units, and then you have the service center. Right next door, it's, it, that's going to be a crucial piece, is to try to get some public transportation down, down in Gifford.
There are a lot of people who walk up and down Gifford Street-
They do.
... with their bags from their service center, in all kinds of weathers. Sam?
There's a precedent that already exists, excuse me, in Chatham, where the H2O line, which is, you know, Hyannis to Orleans, actually goes to Crowell Road and goes probably no further, I mean, about the same distance out of the way to get to a housing development, goes back to 28 and continues on its route, so I don't think that the CCRTA is going to have any great resistance to accommodating that, once the need is identified and you have a significant complex there, as well as the properties along the road. So, I, I'm actually going to the Advisory Board meeting for CCRTA tomorrow, but as soon as we, I think there's a, you know, a, a deadline, when these units will be occupied and the need will be starting, I think we need to- and the need will be starting, I think we need to bring it forward and, and start, uh, asking them to look at changing or modifying their routes.
Doesn't even have to be part of the regular route. It can be every other turn or whatever it might be in the summer when they're busy or, you know, they can figure out how that-
Well, these are year-round dwellings, so I don't see any reason why there shouldn't be a consistent, uh, service. And I can tell you, having driven that route many times myself, you go into those complexes, you don't necessarily pick up any passengers each time, but, you know, it's, it's just a consistent-
The service is there.
The service is there and it begins to develop and people begin to use it more and more over time.
Yeah, the service center, Brenda Swain and myself were talking to the RTA at one point. This is quite some time ago. Um, but it would be helpful to get some public transportation down that road.
Maybe I can get together with you and we can reintroduce this, uh, to the CCRTA so they can put it on their plans of, of what future combinations they need to be making.
That'd be great, Sam. That'd be great.
I would move with the board, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, authorize the town manager to execute a commitment letter setting forth the terms of financial award for the Falmouth Housing Corp. in the amount of $65,000 for 10 units of affordable workforce housing to be constructed at 591 Gifford Street, known as Gifford Workforce Two, I use Two. This award is intended to demonstrate the trustees' support of the project with the anticipation that additional funds may be awarded at a later date when the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund has sufficient balance to provide additional funding.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Carla. I appreciate it. Okay, we have our presentation from Eversource. Now you know that our agenda is just a, you know, guideline, so, sorry, I know it's a little bit-
You know, we show up at the beginning.
Yeah, a little bit later, but, uh, welcome.
So, I'm Ronique Goldstein with Eversource Energy, Community Relations for the Cape, including Falmouth. Thanks for having me again, Chairman Braga and members of the board. So earlier this summer, I have with me actually this evening John Ventura, who's gonna kind of lead the presentation. Um, he's our manager of engineering for Southeastern Massachusetts, including the town of Falmouth. Um, so I'm really gonna let him kinda guide and I'll chime in as needed. Um, earlier this year, I would say it was in August, we met with, um, Mr. Souza, uh, John, myself and Mr. Souza, just to talk a little bit about some of the upgrades we have to come. And we wanted to share what we have for 2020 and a little bit of a vision of some, um, other, uh, jobs, other projects that are in the pipeline. So I'll have John come up and take it from here. And if I forget to tell you, I want to wish everyone a happy and a healthy new year.
Thank you very much.
Forget to tell you at the end.
The same to you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Again, uh, my name is John Ventura. I'm the manager of engineering. And, um, uh, this last summer, Cape Cod actually hit an all-time peak for load, uh, from the heat events that we had and, um, Falmouth, some areas of Falmouth had a lot of trouble with power quality and low voltage. So, uh, we've looked at the area. We're familiar with some of the issues. Uh, a lot of it is geographic. Uh, we do have some projects, uh, planned over the next couple of years to improve that area. And we just wanted to communicate that with, with you and the town and get your support for some of these construction projects going forward, so. Yeah, I'll go to, uh- Little screen. Uh, VO, VO. All right. And I usually talk with my hands, but I'll use this pointer if I need to. Uh, it doesn't-
He's not a very good pointer.
Doesn't work.
Nope.
I'll just, uh, use my fingers. I use my fingers.
You can use the mouse. You can use the mouse too.
That's probably the best.
Okay. So, um, just high level. So, um, in, in West Falmouth, around, along Route 28A, we have, um, right now there's two substations that feed all those customers on 28A. Uh, one is, uh, West Falmouth Sub, um, at the very top, the, 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 the color lines are the circuits along that road. But we have one substation at the very top where it says existing station. We have another one on Jones Road, um, that, that feeds from another direction. So one of the problems we've had is during, uh, heavy loading, the voltage in the middle, uh, gets to be very weak. Also, uh, we didn't have a lot of automated switches between those two stations. So this year we've actually installed, um, three. So our dispatchers can remotely switch customers around, monitor voltages and, and do things like that. So that's, that's been done. Um, uh, the, those are already in service. We also are putting in what are called voltage regulators, which maintain the voltage at a more consistent level, uh, throughout the year. So those, those are going in as well. But in addition to that, we don't really like only having those two sources, um, because of the loading that's grown in the area. So we're proposing to put two new transformers, uh, which I'll show in a minute, uh, one up by Brick Hillen Road, another one, uh, on Palm Rav right in front of the hospital. Um, so there's two, two sites we'd like to discuss and hopefully get your support, um, as we go forward. Um, and then down the road, we will do more work, uh, improving the construction, but these two pads are the, the critical things we're gonna go over today. So the first, um, most critical one, we'd actually, uh, hope to get in service before summer, is, um, uh, at the end, uh, at the intersection of, uh, uh, 28A and Brick Hillen Road, there's a wooded area in front of, uh, a lot. And, uh, we'd like to, uh, install the, the transformer. There's no fencing or anything. I'll show you a picture of what it looks like, but this will serve, uh, customers in both directions and again, provide better voltage and reliability for that area. Now, uh, one of the challenges to get there is we actually have to install an underground system, um, uh, under, under Route 28A instead of going, under Route 28. Instead of going over, we wanna go under it and then extend, uh, rebuild the existing overhead wires from the, from the off-ramp, uh, to 28 and bring in a high voltage line to that, that, uh, transformer. Um, so that's kinda what, that's the, that's going to be the, the location we're gonna try to get permission for from the town. So hopefully we have your support. Um, yeah, the second site, which, uh, is, uh, we do wanna do as well, cause it backs up, uh, the other substation. We're looking at either starting it this year, but have it in service, uh, for next year. This is the second unit. Uh, there's a, a large parcel that right now we have some wires crossing over it, um, across Palm Rav and it, we have an easement there, but we would like to put a transformer there as well. They're gonna look the same, but they provide again more redundancy and better supply for the area. So that's the second location. Uh, this is what it looks like. It's a very common-looking green transformer. Um, it's a 2,500 KVA and we've got, uh, we've been using these in several towns to improve reliability. And, uh, we're, uh, we think it's a good way to kind of, um, give, give the system a, a boost in, uh, uh, capacity. So that's kinda what it looks like. Uh, it's, uh, the dimensions are there. We don't need fencing, uh, cause it's a very traditional transformer. Um, it's, um, you know, fully, uh, um, tamper-resistant and, um, you know, uh, safe to touch essentially. And, um, we wouldn't need bollards if there's a, an area where it's gonna be accessible to five vehicles. Uh, and these are also, um, for reliability, they're animal-proof and weather-resistant. So instead of putting big transformers on the poles, this is a better solution, um, where we, you know, wanna get this, uh, it's called step-down capacity in place. Um, so that's the transformers. Uh, one other project that's a little more distant, uh, we were investigating, uh, in East Falmouth, um, there's a Minahawk, is that what it's?
Minot.
Minahawk, okay.
No, there's no intuitive way to pronounce it.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you. It was tricky.
It's local only.
I should've looked it up. Um, but so right now there's two long, uh, uh, circuits with a total of 1,900 customers and there's no tie at the end. So if we have a broken pole or any problem along the way, everybody has to wait until that repair is made. So what we'd like to do, uh, and we, we learned that the town does own the bridge, uh, from the, uh, we did talk to DOT. Uh, we'd like to attach, um, and this is coming. We don't have the, the engineering done on it yet, but with your approval, we would attach a conduit to the side of the bridge and, uh, to a manhole on each side and it would allow us to tie these circuits together along these roads and give a better reliability, more automation. So that's a future project, but again, that's one of those things where we're trying to work with communities to improve the systems and, uh, we have to, to really make it better, we have to do things like this, which are a little ingenious. So, um, that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if there's any questions, um, but we'd like to definitely, with your approval, get that one transformer on Brick Hillen Road in service this, this, uh, before next summer.
We should, we should clarify, it's on town property. So we thought that it made sense and, and Mr. Souza thought that it would make sense to present, um, what we have in the works. There were, there were also some concerns, I think, over the summer and, and residents from West Falmouth that, you know, over that very hot weekend, um, lost power, I think, multiple times. So this was already on our radar and one of the solutions was the, um, the transformer, which I, the padment transformer, which I almost, I like to, I tell John, that's kinda like a mini substation, which really is, is what it is. And instead of, um, having huge transformers up high that are more, um, uh, susceptible to the elements and, and animals that, that seem to make their way in there, um, or spills, it's really kind of encased and it really boosts the system. So, I mean, we'll go through the, the regular process of, um, uh, getting rights to, to use the property, but we thought it would make sense that, to show you that we're, you know, we're making improvements in the town. We're, um, we're hearing what residents are also, uh, feeling and that we have these things on our radar and take, radar and taking steps, uh, to, to better improve their experience.
Two, and then Doug?
So for the, um, the actual construction, I, would it be a process to work with a town engineer in terms of, we wouldn't wanna do it during peak traffic times, for example? So would that be before this coming summer? Is that-
So we're going to try to get, you know, get everything through. That's what, one of the reasons we tried to squeeze into this meeting, so we can get going on all the rights, cause we have to get state rights. So, uh, we did wanna have in service, uh, this summer. It's not the end of the world if we don't, but we'd really like to have that, you know, kind of enhancement in the system before summer. That's our-
But we'd work with, to answer your, your question, we'd work with town departments, with engineering, with DPW.
Sure.
Move things along.
Right. Doug?
Uh, when a transformer on a pole explodes, they really make quite a explosion. It seems like it's pretty powerful. How would that affect one of those ground-mounted, uh, transformers?
So usually what explodes is the fuse. The fuse blows. Um, so this transformer's actually protected by a device like a circuit breaker where the, 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 instead of exploding like a fuse, it, it's, uh, in, in a vacuum. So you don't see anything. You just hear a click, click. So that's how it's, it's different.
Oh, good.
Yeah, different.
I noticed on, on that picture you gave, there says no PCBs inside. Uh, what's the nature of the liquids that are actually surrounding the coils of those transformers?
Okay, so that's a good question. Um, so we, we wanted these to be the most environmentally sensitive, friendly transformers. It's actually filled with a type of vegetable oil.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a mineral oil, it's a vegetable oil. And it's actually, uh, it's not even the type of oil you need to report, but we do. We treat it like regular oil, but it's, uh, it's like a premium-grade, um, Enviro, Enviratemp is what it's called.
That's a biodegradable.
Biodegradable, yes.
Form of oil.
Any other questions?
My other question would be not actually about the projects that you're promoting, but I was hoping that you were gonna be mentioning some of our double poles. Is, is that a different department?
Um, yes, and I think we need to-
So I can say that, um, uh, at the last meeting that I was, I think it was in September, it's out of my head. I for some reason remember September 23rd. That just may be stuck in my head for whatever reason. Um, I did get some feedback from the board. I think I brought back some numbers where we had come from 2018 and what we had brought them down and kind of explained the process. Um, I do know I did some follow-up on, uh, there was one particular one-
Tammich Road and Dunkin' Donuts?
Correct. I was just gonna say right by the Dunkin' Donuts, but that doesn't really always narrow things down in Massachusetts or on the Cape. Um, and I believe they made some progress. I can certainly follow up by email to see. I don't know that we would have dropped our numbers down significantly from the September meeting, but I know that it was a focus, um, as was completing all of the 2019 work and to get it done. Um, you know, the company has its own sort of internal metrics to, to get things done by the end of the year. Um, but I can certainly come back and, um, and do further, you know, I know it's, it's, it, as I said the last time, if there are any particular areas that are, um, for lack of a better word, an eyesore, and they're really kind of a sticking point with folks and it, and, and, you know, we can, we can address those first, even though they may not be the oldest or the, you know, sometimes it's, it's just, um, you know, if we can, if we can help, um, you know, make folks feel better in certain areas and address those first.
Well, we-
So, I don't know if I answered your question as far as-
Well, I know this isn't really our topic for today, but just generally informationally, so I know you folks came in, I guess maybe September was the right time, but the year before, we also had a presentation by a couple of different folks who showed us, you know, that we, we know we had 60 double poles at the time and they had shown us a graph of, you know, progress, which I thought at the time, I actually thought that that was gonna be the proposed thing for the next year. But then come to find out later that it was actually really just a simulated schedule that would potentially be what would happen if, if it was undertaken. So we've actually been asking about this for a couple of years, about these double poles that are, you know, 60 of them in a town of our size. It seems like a lot to me. I don't know if it is, but.
I'd say rela-, I'd say relatively no, cause there, there are towns that have hundreds. So I think it's, it really depends. And then just kinda to put some context to this, every time either a pole is hit, um, or you have a project that requires new poles, then you create new double poles. And then the whole process of, you know, going from the top to the bottom, transferring and removal happens again. So you, there's no real way that you can get rid of them. Um, I'd say bring it down to zero. I don't think it's, it's realistic.
Well, there's gonna always be ongoing work.
Correct.
But I think the thing that we hear-
We're gonna continue to upgrade and, and part of the upgrade is, is new poles, which is a good thing, but for a period of time, it creates that double pole.
Right.
Um, so I'd, I'd say, you know, I don't have the stats in front of me and I did see the presentation that the folks from operations, um, gave to you the year before. There was comparisons from town to town and all kinds of statistics. And I, I like looking at kind of a snapshot of where we are, but also giving you context of, I think, where we were in 2018 compared.
That was the problem, is the, the town-by-town one, we were about tenfold every other town in the Cape. And so it's, you know, you say, oh, you're kind of normal. The information we got two years ago said, no, actually we had way more than anybody else. And as Doug suggested, we were said, but we're gonna attack it. And the attacking didn't occur. The last time you heard, you said there was a piece of software where people could go on online and see the status of all the double poles in town. Is that something that could be linked to our website so if someone wanted to see?
The only people that have access to it is utili-, are utilities, um, and, and the town. Um, so it's not a public, it, it's, it's for the purpose of order, of, uh, you know, a structure and a process for the utilities to, to know when they're next.
That would let us know which utility is that was holding it up. So whether, you're saying Eversource is not always the one that's the last one to get done, until Verizon moves their stuff, the double pole's gonna hang on. And it's sort of that.
In theory, yeah. So what we do, what I can propose, um, is that I, uh, have our folks from operations maybe sit down with DPW, what we do and what I've done in other towns, uh, that I've worked with and kinda take a look and bring utilities together and say, you know, how can we, um, you know, what, again, what are the areas that we wanna work on first and, and work together. I, I'd say generally speaking, we work, we're all waiting on each other. Um, so if, if, I believe Falmouth is a, is a, uh, Eversource-set town. But in other towns, you know, Verizon could be waiting on, you know, Comcast or whatever before they can pull, you know, usually they're the last and then they pull the pole. Um, but it, I, I guess I could propose that we, I know operations would be happy to do that, sit with DPW. Um, you know, I, I can't say where the stats are today, but I'd say relatively, off the top of my head, I can't remember what I said to you guys. I think it was, we brought it down to 60-something from, it was in the eighties or nineties, the previous meeting that we'd been here. I'd, I'd have to look at the data. But, um, I'm happy to sit with DPW and see if we can help make some progress with other utilities, bring, you know, bring Verizon and bring Comcast. Sometimes Open Cape is on, um, and then we'd need representation from the town, maybe the wire. Usually it's the fire or, um, or one of those entities that can help, um, you know, cause really you're, I will say the town is only getting a snapshot when it looks in engines in the, in the database. They're only seeing what the town has facilities on. So we can supply that information so they can see, you know, and we've done that for other towns.
Cause the only teeth we have-
If that answers your question, that, that, that can sometimes be helpful, cause they get an idea of who's, who's next.
The only teeth we have is when you come to us requesting premiaeasements on our town property or to put up poles, we can say, um, how about you take care of what we're asking you and then we can agree to that. And that's what we need to be able to tell you and Verizon and Comcast saying, well, don't try to put up any more poles, any more handholds or any more conduits until you follow through on some of the promises.
Yeah, cause I think it's a partnership, you know, we've gotta work together.
To, you know, we, we had sort of some lingering projects, not even, you know, beyond sort of double poles, but kind of be, you know, that were really some, some important- but kind of be, you know, that were really some, some important projects that kind of lingered for a while until, and nobody wants to hold up these important projects that bear services and improved services. But, you know, sometimes when we, as sort of the representatives of the town are having our constituents saying, what is going on? And why isn't, you know, this project down? Or why is this double pole? That's an eyesore, which is, you know, mainly what people are concerned about. Why is that still there? Um, you know, I think it's very helpful for us to at least be able to, um, you know, give them an answer about, this is why, because we're still waiting for Verizon or whoever it is to kind of, because we do have those folks that we can contact and say to our contact person Verizon, this has got to happen. So I think it's helpful to have that ongoing dialogue back and forth.
I like the offer to sit down with DPW and I'd like this board to say, yes, please do that.
Yes, please.
Please do that. I'm happy, I'm happy to help facilitate that. And I would say that, uh, you know, uh, I, I think I provided my information to all. If there's ever an issue that I can help facilitate, like an eyesore of, of a double pole, or hey, what's going on with this project? We feel that it's, and I'm assuming it's a town, maybe a connection to the senior center. I have no idea that that was the case, but that type of town job, you know, we, like I said, it's a partnership. We have to work together and wherever we can, you know, work with you and help you. And then, you know, maybe you'll feel more inclined to feel supportive of the, the projects that we, um, you know, that are really, that we're doing for the better good of the, of the community and the residents to improve their, the, the quality of service that they're getting from, from the utility.
Yeah, and, and that's what I wanted to emphasize. Though I really respect you for really trying to take care of, of, you know, of, an area that really is weak in terms of serving electrical energy requirements. So, uh, I'm very pleased to hear you addressing this kind of issue and looking at it and trying to improve the robustness of our electrical delivery system. So my hat's off to you for that. And I hope that we can work together in a partnership and, and make this happen, whatever's required.
Great. And then there's other projects as well. I didn't get it. There's others, there's other.
And I'm sure you're well aware, but North Falmouth tends to have some of those sort of unreliable, um, you know, very vulnerable to the, a car accident that isn't even sort of one of the types of things that you would think, or storm where nobody else loses power, but nor, so, you know, that's another one of those areas, um, you know, similar to West Falmouth, that just has that constantly hearing from folks, why is my power, you know, why isn't any other part of town? Um, so that's another place that has some particularities.
So I have good news for that. We actually are putting in a, a, a station expansion in North Falmouth that's going to help that whole area.
That's great. Yeah, there's a lot, lot going out, lot going on on the Cape. I think we're, we've got a different playbook, both from, uh, um, you know, infrastructure improvement, storm management, I mean, yeah, and, 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 you know, storm response. Um, we're really, the Cape is a busy place and it's, we heard it through presentations on how it's changed over the years. But since I've seen you, it was just in September, there were three, um, pretty significant storms and, and, and Falmouth was the recipient, unfortunately, along with Barnstable, with the largest outage in the, in the storm and, um, on, uh, October 16th, 17th, and 18th. So.
Pretty good response, though.
Pardon me?
Pretty good response, though.
I'm glad to hear that. I know that, you know, the, the two circuits feeding Woods Hole and that was, there was a lot of trees and.
A lot of damage.
Lot of damage that took time to, it is amazing how long that takes to, to really sort through that safely. So.
Safely.
Thank, thank you for that feedback.
Yep, Doug, one last one.
And so, um, just a reminder, that one at Sandwich Road is really not just an eyesore. It's actually a safety hazard.
That's the, I know they went to look at it, our, our area supervisor. I'm going to write it down again, though. And that's, I had the address of Sandwich.
It's on the corner of Sandwich Road and Route 151.
Yep.
And it's the, uh, exit portion of the, it's a one-way in and one-way out there, I think. Or maybe it's both ways, but.
Right next to the Dunkin' Donuts, right there.
Yes. So as you're pulling out, say if you went through the drive-through of the Dunkin' Donuts and then you're pulling out, when you're pulling out, there's a double pole, right while you're sitting, waiting to pull out, the double pole is perfectly positioned to block your view, uh, your vision of the traffic. So.
Okay.
It really is a safety issue. And then, uh, another thing that's unrelated to service or maintenance or anything like that, uh, we've been doing coastal resiliency studies and we've been, um, doing a study of surf drive. I know you guys put a big investment in, uh, new manholes to serve the vineyard. And, uh, just wanted to remind you that that coastline is really, uh, breaking down fast.
Vulnerable.
And so we're looking at ways that maybe we might consider elevating the road or dunes or berms or something to try to shore up that, uh, coastline there. But you might want to get involved in, in thinking about that yourself. And I don't know if you have mitigation strategies or what the capabilities of that manhole are for being submerged, but.
Yeah, it's, we expect.
Yeah.
But I know down at Elm Road, we have some equipment that's elevated, uh, because that's the switching devices for the, some of the cables.
Mm-hmm. So that could be submerged, but only temporarily?
Uh, yes. I'm not sure. I'd have to check how, yeah, usually it's, it's, it's.
It's, it goes up and down.
Not, if it was, if it was, um, uh, fully submersible, it would have been on the ground. We wouldn't worry about it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I think the controls, there are seals, but how long it would last.
Stay in saltwater or?
Yeah, I'd say if the town is looking into certain changes, definitely involve us in that conversation.
Right.
I mean, we've gone, I, I know it, it's a little bit different, but I've participated and brought folks in to participate in some of the MVP. Um, I, I imagine the town's already gone through that exercise.
Right.
Um, but that's just kind of the beginning discussion to get that designation and move forward from there. Um, probably makes sense that you did that. I don't know what year you did it, but.
And we, we just had a, you know, really, and I'm sure, I mean, it's, it's available, so we can share that information about sort of that specific vulnerability of surf drive, the data that was kind of derived from that study. Um, it's very helpful.
And they're working, they're working on it now, and there's a comment period going on for the initial thoughts as to what the town would like to see happen. Should we just retreat? Or should we reinforce? You know, so we're just starting to really think about it. I just wanted to mention that to you.
Yeah, no, it's great. Thank you.
Mike mentioned, you, you targeted the Minot Bridge, uh, to provide a power across that bridge to give you some redundancy. But we're about to replace the Bourne Bridge over the next couple of years. And that might be an opportunity for you to do the same thing there while the bridge is being completely refilled.
That'd be ideal. That'd be the ideal time.
And we have to worry about sewage crossing that bridge as well. So if we can get it into the design, it'll make it easier for everybody.
So is that a town bridge? It's not a DOT?
Town bridge.
Town bridge. When you speak with DPW, all, all this will come up.
Well, but ask, you heard about the, the mention of the Bourne Bridge as being part of this overall, uh, sewage treatment, but it's also part of our denitrifying of our, our estuaries because of the buildup of sewage that's flowing into them. This is all part of a big system level picture. And if we can get you in to be, you know, doing things at the same time that things are being, you know, under construction, that would actually work out well for everybody.
I'll see if we have underground utilities and that.
Thank you both very much. It's really refreshing to get a, a sort of preview of some of these projects and to just kind of hear about things that are going on. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. And I can keep, um, as things kind of move forward in the new, it's funny to say 2020, but in, in the year 2020.
It's here.
Um, can keep you posted and, and communicate with the board if there's, you know, as it progresses and, and, uh, we need to let the public know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, we have, um, vote to approve complete streets policy. So we had a draft policy initially from, uh, Ray Jack, who put a policy together. We got some input from Bike Ways Pedestrian and from Planning. And everyone should have in front of them, in this packet is the initial staff recommended. It says at the top, top staff recommendation. And then on the other one that says Planning Board edits, basically Planning Board's edits are in bold and the edits that were provided by Bike Ways are in red.
Today, tonight, we also received.
Yeah, we received.
Yeah, just to clarify, Madam Chair, the, the clean copy that you received this evening is essentially of those Planning Board edits. It reflects Bike Way suggestions and the, uh, in some cases, counter-suggestions from the Planning Board, um, but also some concurrence as well, particularly in that evaluation, um, the evaluation of effectiveness, uh, that I think Bike Ways had suggested. Planning Board weighed in very heavily on that as well and with, uh, a few minor changes, uh, concurd in that. And so that the, the clean copy I sent your way is an attempt to, uh, affect the merger of Bike Way suggestion, Planning Board counter-suggestions and bring them all together, uh, keeping in mind that this board can change this policy at any time you choose. And so we are, uh, optimistic that, uh, perhaps with the board's concurrence, we can move forward with, uh, a package, uh, and be able to take the next, uh, the next important step.
Um, so my initial thought is, um, just the fact that we've actually added in this section called Evaluation Effectiveness, I think, is very helpful. That was one of the things, a- as you noted, both Planning and Bike and Pedestrian were looking for. And quite frankly, is something that is in a lot of complete streets. You have that component in a lot of complete street policies around how do you, um, you know, sort of, how do you measure? What metrics do you use? What, what, how often do you look at it? Um, and then I guess what I would say is just long-term, I do see us revising this once our Transportation Management Committee is up and running.
Right.
Um, and we have a sense of, um, the work that they're doing, you know, they may, they may fit into this, um, policy in some way in terms of the, the role that they're playing. So, um, you know, I see this as, I don't want to use a living document, because that sounds too, too heavy.
But it is dynamic. You're right.
But it's, yes, thank you. It is dynamic. It's evolving. And, um, there, you know, there are sort of a number of other things that may or may not change over time that we would want to consider. So. Um, I, I do like the draft that's in front of us. I don't know what other people's thoughts are.
Hi.
Well, I was confused about the edits where it says, um, to meet and review progress quarterly. And it was in red, but then it had a line through it.
That was planning, so red was what Bike Ways had put in. And then planning, that was Planning's edits of striking that out and putting in anything you see in bold. Okay. So the one in front of you was Planning Board's edits, which took Bike Ways and edited further on that.
Hmm.
So anything red was initially suggested by Bike Ways and anything that happens to the red was a suggestion of Planning Board.
Okay.
I think, um, this board did a nice job giving the opportunity for more collaboration between Bike Ways and Planning and to let, uh, let those suggestions be considered more fully.
Sam?
Yeah, I think the one thing we want to be careful is that we don't create bottlenecks on moving forward. And I was a little, a little concerned about some of the wording that was being suggested. Um, that basically we're going to slow process down. But, uh, these are all going to be done in open meetings and we're going to have a forum for everybody to get their two cents into it. But, uh, I, I like the final revision better. I think it doesn't restrict us as much. And I, I think there's just got to be a little bit more trust that people are out to do the best thing for Falmouth and its citizens. And yes, we need to keep worrying about bike and pedestrian access. Um, but we have some larger traffic problems that we're going to have to deal with as well as the traffic keeps growing in Falmouth. And moving things up and down Main Street is just one example.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I, I think this does have to be a sort of a, you know, a blueprint. No, not a blueprint. That's too detailed. But at least a, you know, a, a guideline for moving forward. And I think this probably strikes a nice balance. And like you said, it's a, it's a flexible document and it's in our hands to change it if it's required.
I think the, the one thing that, um, I, you know, sort of heard from Bike Ways in particular was just that, that, um, and it was actually very positive in that the, um, structure that we used, the committee, the Citizens Advisory Group that we used for Route 28 was very effective. And I think they just, you know, their thought was that type of, um, component and model, um, as we look at these very big issues that, um, you know, touch on all of the things that that Route 28 question touched on. Aesthetics, personal property, characters of our, of our independent sort of villages and parts of town that.
Multimodal.
Yes. Um, you know, planning for the future, really making sure you're addressing transportation, uh, you know, transportation and mobility needs for all users. Um, uh, you know, I think that that was really their, that their main concern, that we have some place where we value that. But there's nothing in this that, you know, prevents that from being what we do. And I think that this board in particular has found that that's a very, um, useful and effective way of addressing large problems and can be applied to any single project that we do going forward. Um, it's, it's not prohibited in any way by this. And this does in fact create some neat, you know, create sort of this idea of evaluation and sets forth some metrics for that.
I kind of liked the reference that was made about, you know, engaging the Transportation Committee or the Bike Ways, though. Why do you suppose those needed to come out?
I don't know that they needed to come out. Um, I think in some ways, you know, some of these, some of these questions, you could be engaging a lot of people. So do we not, you know, we're going to be engaging Planning, we're going to be, so, you know, I guess.
Because they're not specifically mentioned, they're.
I just felt it was creating the mission of the Management Commission as opposed to the Complete Streets policy. It seemed to be directing them as to what to do. And I don't think that's the right place for that direction to come from.
Okay.
Right. In other words, Transportation Management Committee in some ways is sort of the hub for some of these conversations of bringing in that collaboration with Planning, with Bike and Pedestrian around some of these issues, rather than, I guess, yeah, I mean, I think it, it doesn't specify exactly what transportation has to do, right? This wouldn't be the place to do that.
Vision was the right word I was looking for.
Okay.
Of where we want to go, um, and not process. Um, so, you know, I think that's, that's how we should probably separate it out.
Okay. So what would be the mechanism then? Uh, so the Transportation Management Committee would just occasionally check in with DPW and say, you know, what are you guys working on for complete streets right now? Or, because if.
I think there'd be a direct liaison with that committee. We'd be working with them with regularity. So I don't think there'd be any concern about, um, them operating in a vacuum and with no connection to Public Works. So I, I think we would have, uh, you know, an ongoing collaborative relationship. That's certainly what's anticipated.
I think, yeah, go ahead, Sam.
It doesn't have to really be twofold, where we look at the whole, you know, town and think about transportation. Be looking at it on a project by project basis, where you're going to want to bring these working groups together to address those proper needs along that particular stretch. Um.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, let, let me just, I, I think where I see it most valuable to maybe, where we say the Falmouth Department of Public Works will defen- will develop performance measures to periodically assess the effectiveness of implementing the complete streets. And I don't mean this at all. I mean, DPW is phenomenal. I think there is, uh, there should be some out, sort of other collaborative or outside look. If we're asking the organization that is really implementing to also be assessing, um, and creating their performance measures to assess their effectiveness, I, I see that as being a little bit, not problematic, but, um, it, it would be like us developing, I mean, I guess we assess ourselves, but.
Assess yourself?
Yeah, it's just a little bit too in-house. Like, it, I think there could be some language around, and I think what Bike Ways or even Planning or someone had presented, sort of Department of Public Works in collaboration with or something to that effect, you know, with Transportation Management Committee or something, you know, will.
Or.
Come up with this, assess this effectiveness of complete streets, some outside look or collaboration.
Or some sort of a heads up, how would we know what roadway projects are being considered for renovation unless the DPW thinks and says, oh, yeah, we got to check, tell Transportation Management Committee? I'm just wondering what the mechanism will be.
It's supposed to be coming directly to you from Public Works.
Right.
You're the roadway commissioners. So that ultimately it's, it's the call of the five electmen in this room is what you go forward with on any roadway project.
That's right. That's a good point.
With input from any and all of those committees, which you regularly welcome.
And so at the point when we hear about it, is that early enough on in the, the planning stage? Or would that be when they're just about to do the work?
Well, frequently, you know, you'll get a report, like a status report, and prior to acting upon it, of course, you'll, um, ask for input. And it may be that you ask committee members or a committee chair to come in and comment, or they can comment via email or letter prior to you taking any final actions. And more and more of that, I think that's the standard working, uh, approach that this board of selectmen takes, that, you know, you take the input before you make a final determination. So you don't really do everything in one night.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess, yeah, I guess my thing is less about sort of specific projects, but more about, are we assessing? more about are we assessing those projects for how they, how they comply with, or are, you know, sort of meeting the requirements or standards or, you know, of Complete Streets? So I guess I would like to see there be some language, whether we put it at the first paragraph, I think the metrics all look good, or the bottom where it says these metrics will be compiled into a report by the Town Department of Public Works with, I would say either something like input or assistance from other departments and committees. So in other words, I think it would be nice, as they do this report for Bike Ways, for Transportation Management, to be looking at that. And they may have a contradictory or somewhat different view. And, you know, I think it would be...
To solicit.
To solicit, and so that we're not doing things, what happens sometimes so often is it's just, it drags out a conversation, because we get a report from sort of, you know, one thing, and then nobody's heard about it until it comes before us, right? Then we're getting lots of input, and it just sometimes isn't the most productive way. I think it would be very productive to get that report with the input and thoughts and, you know, attached to it.
Built in, right.
Yes.
Things that kind of bothers me a little bit, and it came up just over the fiber optics exploration that we're looking at, is I asked one of the Planning Board members, you know, has the Planning Board ever weighed in on fiber optic communication in the community? And they said, no, we haven't even thought about it, you know? Well, that raises a question. All right, we're looking at a town here and how we try to maintain vitality and quality of life and grow it in a compatible, you know, non-abusive kind of way. You know, it seems to me that we do need to periodically have, you know, DPW come in and talk about where they see us going in terms of our overall transportation needs. And then they've got to be funded for these projects, right? So we should at that point be bringing in these other committees to really ask, is this addressing all the needs in this town? And are there things that you see where this ought to be bolstered?
It would prevent delay, is I think your other point.
And collaboration and a full view of whatever the subject matter might be. I just, you know, I think we, we task committees with doing kind of the deep dive on things, and then if we don't ask for their input in the, in sort of the right time of things, it either...
Delays the project.
Delays the project, or it kind of, you know, we have to kind of go back and reinvent the wheel. So I think it would be very helpful. I would want to see some kind of language that, that lays out in this evaluation and effectiveness piece, that requirement, that it would be with assistance and input from other departments and committees.
Madam Chair, one question that I would have, just to, perhaps for the board to ponder, is that one of the challenges always is when there is a report prepared, normally prepared for presentation of the Board of Selectmen, and if we need to go through a couple other stages prior to that, the first time you're going to see it is when you read about it in the newspaper. And, and that's sort of awkward, as opposed to bringing it to the audience for whom it's presented and then having you direct. I understand there's a couple steps there, but say, okay, you presented your status report to us, now we would like it evaluated. We're sort of uncomfortable presenting it to a different entity first, and that's the first time this board's going to see it, is when you read about it.
Isn't that the purpose of joint meetings?
Yeah, I mean, and...
Can be, yeah, we can invite them. Absolutely.
It seems, that's the perfect use of a joint meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. But what I was going to say, for a report like this, wouldn't it make sense for, I mean, if there, if the requirement for a report like this is that there's input, I guess that if that committee gets a draft, I mean, I understand that you might hear about it if someone covers the Bike Ways meeting and they've had a conversation about it. I mean, I'm a little bit less worried about that in some ways than getting a good product.
Right.
At the end of the day, that we can use. I mean, obviously, if something's very sensitive in nature, then that's just going to be its own separate very sensitive in nature issue. But most public works, I mean, they're public projects, and I understand that they're going to come before us and we have to weigh in on them. But, you know, if we have that information, I think it just makes us a better board, and it makes our work more timely, and the results hopefully more timely for, to get projects moving and done, and so...
How, how much work is it to make a change to this?
Not a lot of work. We could just do it right now.
Put it on your agenda and do whatever you care to do.
We could do it, we could do it too much.
So maybe what we should do is go ahead with this now, let the Transportation Committee have their first meeting or two, and then maybe we should meet with them, and maybe we can have the DPW, and we can talk about this language and implementation and flush it out then.
I would just like to propose that we take out the words, two words, and it's as necessary.
In the parentheses there on page five.
So it would say, these metrics will be compiled into a report by Town Department of Public Works with assistance from other departments and committees, and presented as needed. I mean, they're going to present it to us. Implementation strategies will be adjusted as needed based on the findings in these reports. So that the understanding is there is going to be assistance, cooperation, collaboration with other committees and departments when they put these reports together. Again, this is, this is specific to Complete Streets. This is not about every project that they put together for everything. It's about, you know, these, putting together a report about how they're doing. Maybe I see this happening, you know, once or twice a year where they're giving us an update on where we're at with this. So that would be my...
I guess I move that we will accept this and take it as is for now.
As edited.
As edited.
I think it's a good suggestion.
And then sometime in the near future, we'll have a joint meeting with perhaps Transportation and Bike Ways.
And planning, yep.
Specifically about this and transportation issues?
I think we need to clarify with the Transportation Committee what their mission is anyway.
Yes, I agree.
We have to have a meeting with them early on in their process so they know what we're asking them to do.
And we also need to refine their mission statement and update it.
But I would do that with them.
And this maybe too. Okay.
All right. So I had a motion and a second. So to adopt that policy as drafted with that change of taking out the word as necessary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some more licenses. Let me just read them off. Why do I have, this is a revised list?
It's the same list.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right, well, I'll just read, just going to read this one. All right. All alcohol restaurant, excuse me, La Cucina Sumari, 237 Main Street, The Black Dog Heights Cafe, 465 Grand Avenue, Pizza Bar, 146 Sandwich Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All alcohol, Package Store, Cappies, 21 Spring Bars Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Common Victrola license, La Cucina Sumari, 237 Main Street, The Black Dog Heights Cafe, 465 Grand Avenue, The Pizza Bar, 146 Sandwich Road, LBK DBA Burger King, 111 T-Ticket Highway, Eat Your Hard Out Cafe and Gourmet Market, 587 Main Street, Cupcake Charlie's, 153 Main Street, The Buffalo Jump, 277 Hatchville Road, Martha's, 281 Main Street, Peel Pizza, 31 T-Ticket Highway, Subway, 137 T-Ticket Highway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Inholder license, Shoreway Acres, 59 Shore Street.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertainment, La Cucina Sumari, 237 Main Street, The Pizza Bar, 146 Sandwich Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sunday Entertainment, La Cucina Sumari, 237 Main Street.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Used car dealers, class one, two, and three, Route 28 Auto Center, 550 East Falmouth Highway, Battles Used Cars and Trucks, 14 Depot Avenue, Falmouth Motor Car, 716 T-Ticket Highway.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Livery limo license, Never Rest Limo and Van Service, 33 Village Common Drive.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have some minutes from October 21, 2019.
These are reworked.
I thought these are the ones that have been reworked, right?
Yep.
I move approval of the October 21st joint meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Individual selectman reports.
Well, a little busy week for me. I went to Water Quality Management Committee to see a presentation on denitrifying septic systems and their current status, and they're making really good progress. I was very interested to see the updated status of the layer cake, and it's got some modifications now. That's still holding promise, but it's in its holding pattern now, they've got as many in as they can for the test period, which is a couple years. So there won't be any news on that till that period comes to an end, and they'll make a decision if those are viable. There was a very interesting one, I think, I don't want to say the name right now, but there was one that could be placed in line between your house, I mean, between your septic tank and the field, and do the denitrifying right there in between. So you just come in and snip the two pipes, drop it in. So that seemed like a really good value. And overall, the quality of these things is really up, and you know, the Water Quality Management Committee is going to require that these things perform to 10 or 12 milligrams per liter, where the state only requires 19. So we're going for almost twice the quality as what's normally expected to get our part of the Cape clean. So that was an interesting meeting. I attended the all-inclusive playground meeting. They've got some conceptual drawings now. My first impression was that it seemed like they could use some more activities. It was kind of sparse. So I know that stuff's expensive, but I'd like to start out shooting a little higher and try to do something a little nicer, and more swings was the consensus from most people at the meeting. Swings are like the biggest draw in a playground, so. Let's see, I attended the fiber optic meeting. I saw Sam was there, and that was a very interesting meeting. Shared a lot of comments about what we'd like to have for fiber optic network. They're just kicking off their viability studies, so I guess sometime in the near future, we'll have the professional consultant's opinion of whether or not it's viable for Falmouth to proceed with its own, either its own network or open Cape or some, whatever, we don't know what they're going to propose. And I attended the Marx Building meeting. We just had their report, so you know all about that. And, oh, the Selectman Counselors' meeting, that was interesting this past week, talking about trash and all the developments that have happened, which some of it was encouraging, because the man from the DEP was there talking about, you know, we know we had a crash a couple years ago with recycling, but the market's already responding. And there's a counselor from Barnstable who's involved with their collecting bottles and making their own recycling and processing it into roadway materials. So as the DEP guy said, you know, as things happen, markets respond. And so it's starting to happen now. And I asked him, why can't we have more waste of energy facilities, thinking that it was like something that was overregulated? And he said, really, it's just the economics of it. It's, you know, you're going to spend a half a billion dollars, because you're not going to build a little tiny one, because it's such a complex thing. And I was thinking maybe it would be a good idea to have one on the vineyard, but they probably just don't have enough trash.
Right.
So it's an interesting learning experience, as usual, for me.
Thank you.
I will say though, when I was in Alaska, for relatively small towns, they were doing that, generators and generating some electricity.
They have oil money.
Well, that's probably right. That's probably paid for the infrastructure. You're like getting...
We find oil, we can build one of our, solve a lot of our problems.
No problem with revenue. Just quickly, I attended a school committee meeting, and one of the subjects that came up was the whole issue of them having the authority over the property that the old senior center sits on. I think they're generally supportive of the article that'll be coming up before town meeting in April, to transfer the authority to us. There was a little bit of pushback. They were basically wanted kind of a five-year opportunity to take it back if in fact the senior center didn't. But I think that's to be addressed on town meeting floor. I don't want to go into a discussion of that at all. That, that's, that's to be determined. Did attend the CPC meeting, which you heard, their support of the subsidies for the workforce housing coming up. And then I attended the same EDIC meeting, and it's nice to see that project, at least the feasibility study moving forward. And I was pretty impressed with the contractor that they've chosen to actually conduct that. It seems like he's got a wealth of experience and seems to really know what he's talking about. So I'm, you know, excited to see what that report actually tells us.
And I felt like the school committee was very supportive when they voted to declare that Mallow Building surplus, and they had nothing but compliments. I think it seemed very positive.
Yeah. Well, they didn't even know they owned it, or had the authority over it, right? Until Frank unearthed that in the history. And, you know, I thought that Dave Vera's comment, that it had actually been filled in, where you asked the question, who filled it in, you know? Sort of like it created the property. Now, who was it, who did it belong to then?
That was prior to 1978. So they probably did it in a big hurry, because they knew the regulations were coming.
But I think, you know, the question really, the really question is, you know, this is for the town and for the foreseeable need for property. This is the appropriate use, right?
I believe so.
I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Congratulations to the veterans organizations who've been working to make that happen too here.
Lighter cupboard?
Yes. Just to confirm, this evening's meeting is the board's final meeting of this calendar year, also your final meeting of this decade. Well done.
Oh, my goodness, isn't that the truth?
Be advised that Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed on Wednesday, December 25th, and Wednesday, January 1, for the Christmas and New Year's holidays, and Selectman's next regular business meeting for the annual purpose, presenting to you the proposed FY21 Incredible Appropriations Budget is scheduled for Monday, May 6. And I know the board knows about that process, so we'll look forward to that.
You mean January 6?
I'm sorry, did I say?
He said May, I think.
I apologize. Monday, January 6, yes.
Really pushing it out this year.
Won't need that much time. So you will, the board, as, as in the past, will be getting my draft proposed FY21 budget later in the week, between now and Christmas.
For holiday reading.
For holiday, for purpose of holiday reading, enjoyable holiday reading that I know this board of Selectmen is well used to and diligent about. So, but thank you for all that and all the great work over the past decade. Good evening.
Thank you.
The next time we see you, we'll be all seeing 2020.
Exactly. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Safe holidays for everyone.
Everybody at home too.
I have a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.